Good evening. It looks like we've got a full house here. All members of the council are present. Yes, there we see, Councilor Castell. Mary, are you ready to begin?
Yes.
Well, I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:01 PM on March 7th, 2022. All members of the council are present tonight. This is a meeting being held by Zoom. And so at different parts, if members of the public would like to comment, you're going to need to raise your hand, which is should be along the bottom of your screen. That will indicate to us that you'd like to participate. You have something to say and then we'll bring you into that. The first order of business is our pledge of allegiance. So I'd ask that you join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next order of business is our land acknowledgement statement, which I will now read. This is something that we've read because of the request of the Poconocan Nation. Akinai peace, we recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous peoples and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we are in the ancestral homeland of the Poconocan tribe with the original territory of the Poconocan Nation. We commit to ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Poconocan people whose ancestral lands and water we benefit from today. The next item on our agenda is announcements, and I'll ask our town manager, Phil Hervey, to take us through those, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the first announcement is the update on tree planting and removal for the period of February 1st, 2021 through the end of this January. Seventy-nine trees have been removed, were removed, and 110 trees were planted. There are still free COVID-19 rapid self-test kits available at various locations in town, at the town clerk's office, the PEX Center for Adult Enrichment, and the Barrington Public Library's circulation area. The Rec Department, having a little background noise here, sorry, the Rec Department has an online boat and kayak registration, sign up for a drawing to take place on March 21st at live at 1:30 PM for kayak and boat stickers for Walker Farm and the town beach. Walker Farm will have a little bit, a few were stickers going out this year for Walker Farm because of the construction project that's about to happen there. And the town is recognizing the ongoing situation in Ukraine with decorating the front and back entrances, doors of Town Hall in in colorful wreaths. And we'll be looking at changing the light, the uplighting at Town Hall as well to, and it'll be in the colors of the Ukrainian flag. Those are the announcements.
Thank you. Thanks, Phil. We did get some letters from folks who'd asked that we fly the Ukrainian flag. Our flag ordinance and the United States Flag Code prohibit us from flying on the same flagpole, the flag of a foreign nation. So that wasn't possible for us to do. Phil has had the front and back doors decorated and hopefully will light up the Town Hall in the colors of Ukraine in support of those folks. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the consent agenda. Before we do that, is there any member of the council who'd like to draw attention to a particular item on that consent agenda? Rather than just pull them for a separate vote or anything? Yes, Councilor Castell?
Just item six specifically was regarding the planning board.
Okay. Did you want to draw attention to that or you want to pull that off?
You know, it won't affect my vote or anything. I wanted to draw attention to the idea that, and I had a question for the solicitor that I wanted to ask before we approved and voted on that.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
With regard to, we had two resignations from the planning board, both the chair and also a member, Mr. Wallace and Mr. Pitt. I see that Kathleen Barard has moved up automatically to first alternate under this, on our consent agenda. We have to, we should be moving up too. Was that just the fact that we we had to comply with proper notice of the agenda? Or I would assume she would move up to be full member unless I'm misinterpreting something. In other words, if we're substituting, if we're substituting, we have two vacancies. So shouldn't we be moving our second alternate would become a full member, correct?
This is Amy Goins, Assistant Town Solicitor. I think that's typically how it's handled unless the council wants to wants to appoint someone new or different as a full member.
So I don't think there was any, Mary, can you? Can we clarify? I don't think it was at all a comment on the alternates.
Well, not at all.
Came in later.
That's, go ahead.
Can I just say that that last, let me just look at the resignations. Jared Wallace for the planning board, that came in very late. So I put it on. I wasn't thinking about moving people up. I was just trying to get that agenda done for Thursday, getting it posted. Usually my assistant makes the phone call to the next in line and asks, we just didn't have time. I just put it on there because that resignation came in. And sometimes, in some cases, we have to advertise for two months. So I'm trying to think about that. So I'm sorry for the inconvenience. I know that Michelle has reached out. And I believe, you know, Kathleen's going to be moving up to a full member now. So that should be taken care of, you know, by the next meeting.
Right. So she'll become, so with this, she'll become a first alternate this month, and the next month we can move her up to full.
That's exactly right.
And then because the chair resigned effective immediately, would she be eligible to be a candidate as chair even though she's still sitting as first alternate? How would that work? Because I think she would be one of the people you might consider. And I don't have any, I haven't spoken to anyone about that. I haven't spoken to anyone about the vote. And I'm not expressing a preference, but she would be one of those people that would normally, I think, be considered as a potential future chair.
This is Amy. I'll have to review those bylaws.
Okay.
So the vice chair would become chair normally, but I'll have to review the bylaws to see whether as a first alternate, she's eligible to be chair. My guess is no.
Okay. And then that would also hold for vice chair. So then if that, if the, let's say the planning board, the vice chair becomes chair, planning board is looking for a vice chair, they would not, we don't think, unless you tell me otherwise, they would not be permitted to elect her vice chair until she becomes a full member.
Yeah, you know, I'm reviewing the bylaws now, and the bylaws just say that the chair, vice chair, and secretary shall be elected from the membership of the planning board. But in practice, since alternates are only there to vote in place of members who either aren't there or can't participate, it really wouldn't make much sense for a chair or vice chair to be alternate members.
I don't think that the planning board is meeting until after our next meeting. So we, I think we will be able to appoint her at our next meeting in the normal course. And then the next night, the very next night, if the schedule is correct, is the planning board. And I think at that meeting, they'd probably end up having to vote on their chair and vice chair.
Okay, okay. No need to delay further. I apologize for the delay. I just wanted to get some clarification as to where we stood so that I could give them guidance if they asked me, you know, what was going on as well. In fact, I won't, I'm glad we discussed it, won't pull it, and we can go forward.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Jacob, please, go ahead.
I had a question in the planning report. It spoke about the iPads that are going to be used for the tree survey. And I was just wondering if it's at all possible and practical if, as part of that tree survey, we could also try to get an assessment of sidewalk repair that might be needed. I figure if people are going to be out looking at all the roadsides and see where trees are, it would just be, I mean, maybe not part of the same software, but just a tally of where sidewalks might need repair because of hazards. It just seems like an opportunity if we have volunteers out. So I just wanted to mention it.
Carl, please.
Should we run that by Conservation Commission? Because I think it's individuals who are on conservation who will be the volunteers and whether, I mean, I think it's not a bad idea, but if they want to take that on or not, I think they see this as a pretty comprehensive effort that they're going to be undertaking. And I don't know how they feel about it. And so about adding that?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I didn't know, you know, what all is entailed with the project. It just seemed like if eyes are out there and it wouldn't be burdensome, you know, or delay the progress seemed just like a good opportunity. Didn't want to pass it up without mentioning it.
I'll mention it. We'll have a, there'll be a meeting tomorrow night is conservation, and so I'll be there for that. I can bring that up with them.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Does anyone want to pull anything from, so let me explain the consent agenda for our attendees is matters that are typically considered not controversial, and that will be enacted by one vote. There won't be a separate vote unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone from the council have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda for a separate vote? Yes, Councilor Breyer?
I'd like to pull item six, reappointments for a separate vote, please.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Anyone from the public want to pull something from the consent agenda for a separate vote? Okay, seeing no hands. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items six?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice President Humm. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Castell. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Breyer?
Aye.
Councilor Conway?
Aye.
Councilor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And you just wanted a separate vote on this, Jacob? You didn't need to discuss it?
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the reappointments to the boards and commissions?
So moved.
Vice President Humm makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Conway. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Breyer?
I'm staying.
Councilor Conway?
Aye.
Councilor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. And this, we have one on for this evening. Mr. Ron Pitt, who has served on our planning board, is applying to serve on the Open Space Committee. Is Mr. Pitt, there he is, Mr. Pitt. Thank you for coming in tonight, and you tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to open space.
Well, as you've just seen, I resigned from the planning board. I've been on the planning board for four years. I've really learned a lot. I really enjoyed it, but I had to make some time for some other things that I'm taking on. As part of that, I've been the planning board's representative on the Open Space Committee. And it's not just lesser amount of time, but it's really a great committee in terms of its role and its importance. It's focused on outdoor activities, health, natural environment, conservation of open land, environmental education. So those are all really things I care about. And having come from the planning board, I feel like I can contribute sort of the planning perspective on those things. And there's a new chair, Kelly Reese, who's great, and I would really like to be there to support her work.
Great. Any questions from the council? Okay. Well, thank you for your willingness to serve. We'll be voting in just a second. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Vice President Humm?
Yeah, I just want to note, I served with Mr. Pitt on the planning board, and he's a terrific volunteer for our town. So I think he's going to do an excellent job with the Open Space Committee. So in that vein, I move to appoint Ron Pitt as a first alternate to the Open Space Committee.
Okay, by Vice President Humm, seconded by Councilor Castell.
I would second that motion also with the comment that Dr. Pitt is a stellar member of each commission he has served on. I've been really, he always, he is held in the highest regard of his colleagues, and we're really lucky to have him.
Okay, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Breyer?
Aye.
Councilor Conway?
Aye.
Councilor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Mr. Pitt, Dr. Pitt, thank you very much. We appreciate your serving on this, your service already and your service on this committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on the Hazard Mitigation Plan Steering Committee. This is from our town planner, Teresa Kreen. Teresa, you want to take us through this, please?
Sure. Thank you so much, Council President Carroll. We are requesting tonight that Town Council authorize the update and expansion of the town's 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan and formation of a steering committee comprised of town staff, residents, and other stakeholders to guide the plan development. And this is based on us getting additional points through our community rating system application, and I'll talk about what that means in a minute. So our Hazard Mitigation Plan expires this August, 2022. Hazard mitigation plans are five-year plans, and this is meant to mitigate potential risks from future disasters and remain eligible for certain federal disaster assistance funding and hazard mitigation funding programs. So the Federal Emergency Management Agency's five-year update requirement is important because as our community is changing, our risks have also changed, and we need to make sure we are responsive to those risks moving forward, and we have a plan in place to get federal funds. And we want to better understand local impacts related to climate change as well as new assessment tools and improve our community's understanding of our strengths and vulnerabilities to natural hazards. So the formation of a steering committee to guide this process, which we expect will begin after tonight's meeting, will be comprised of town staff, department heads, as well as some other key staffers, residents, and stakeholders. And we put a call out for volunteers from the community that do not serve in any boards and commissions or elected officials in town. We really want to get residents who live in some of our at-risk neighborhoods to guide the planning process and ensure that our Hazard Mitigation and Flood Plane Management Plan reflects our community's values. The town has applied for, I guess, entry into the Community Rating System program from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. What the Community Rating System program, or CRS, is the acronym. What that gets us, if we get into the program, we are, we will be able to pass on a savings to any policyholder in town who has a flood insurance policy. So depending on the score we get from the wonderful application that Kim Jacobs, our resiliency planner, put in this past summer, we may be able to pass on 5%, 10%, or 15% savings on flood insurance premiums. So part of this process that we're starting with the Hazard Mitigation Plan is also meant to get us points so we can continue to get a better score and maybe get to a 15% or maybe even eventually 20% savings across the town on flood insurance premiums. So what we're asking tonight is that Town Council authorize and update the expansion of the Hazard Mitigation Plan and formation of a steering committee comprised of town staff, residents, and other stakeholders to guide our plan development based on CRS activity, 5-10 planning process.
Great. So that, so that folks understand that community rating system that our town planner just was talking about, that involves more than just the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is part of it. But it's, I think I saw it in paper, and it was a stack of maybe 18 inches high. All different plans that had to go into it, all different submissions that a lot of folks worked on but kind of shepherded through by Kim Jacobs. And it's a, it's kind of an ongoing process. So we've applied to get a discount, and we hope to get a discount. If we can get a 5% discount in the first year, that's great. We want to continue to build up points and get greater discounts. It's not just to get a discount because these are all valuable things that we're doing, but they have the added benefit of, you know, sort of assisting us in getting that, those discounts. Anyway, that's the community rating system submission that went in last summer. One part of that was hazard mitigation, and so we need to keep that up to date. Any questions for our planner on this? Councilor Castell?
After the, once the CRS point system is effectuated or is in place, about how long will that take if you have people who are looking at flood insurance policies or looking for their discount that they could get? When would that be official?
We are hoping to, the next step in the process is to hear back from FEMA. So Kim Jacobs submitted the application last July of 2021. We are waiting for the FEMA community visit. There's an acronym for it, but FEMA has to come to our community and visit and validate the application into the program. That has not yet been scheduled, and we have been politely nudging our Rhode Island EMA as well as our FEMA rep to let them know we are eager to hear back from them and get that scheduled so that we can get our determination and get it into the program. So unfortunately, I don't have a date for you. We are hoping to hear any day, and we are continuing to politely nudge as appropriate.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Phil, I think Kim Jacobs has her hand raised.
Thank you. I just wanted to indicate that we actually submitted the application last March, March of 2021. So we, we are waiting. It's, unfortunately, it's not unusual for it to take a while. We've been in touch with FEMA and COVID and and staff changes has really put them behind, but we are hoping to have our CAV visit, our community visit as Teresa indicated, as soon as they can accommodate us. So we'll keep you apprised on that.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion on this? Councilor Castell?
I move to approve the establishment of a town manager-appointed steering committee to work with the town on the update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Members are to include at least two members of the public and one member of the business community.
Motion made by Councilor Castell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Humm. Before we vote, Mike Seward, who is Chair of our Parks and Rec Committee, has his hand raised. And I don't know if it's about this, Mike, or a different item on the agenda.
No, I just wanted to make a public comment, so it's not about this.
Okay, okay. We'll come back to you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Breyer?
Aye.
Councilor Conway?
Aye.
Councilor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Teresa. Next item on our agenda is I missed public comment. That's right. Thank you, Mike. I skipped right by that. I apologize. So now this is public comment. This is a maximum three-minute statement. It's an agenda item for members of the public to speak on an issue not already on the agenda. And please indicate you'd like to speak by raising your hand, and we've already had Mike Seward, so get the honor of going first. Sorry for skipping that already, Mike.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for recognizing me. Good evening, everyone. So the Park Recreation Commission had voted to voted that this statement be read before you folks, and I asked that it be put on the agenda, but I didn't make it. So I'm just going to interject it here into public comment because it's kind of time sensitive. So let me just read this. I know you can't vote on it, and you can't really discuss it because it's public comment, but let's just call it food for thought, I suppose. So the Park, this is the statement, "The Park and Recreation Commission recognizes that short staffing at the Department of Public Works impacts their ability to have athletic playing fields prepared and properly maintained by April, and supports whatever resources are necessary for the Department of Public Works to accomplish this vital work." So that was essentially the vote that we took, the motion. And it's brought about by our knowledge, and we were informed that the Department of Public Works is having a challenge getting quality people to work, and that's, that's what that was about.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you.
Sure. All right.
The next person who would like to make public comment is Paul Dolcinos. Paul, please go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Paul Dolcinos, 20 Walnut Road. This is just something that came to my attention just recently. It seems like it's a kind of a safety concern for the entire community, especially after the last storm where we had snow covered with ice. What I've noticed, and I know that, I believe our ordinance is that the property owners are responsible for clearing the sidewalks in front of their properties. But I think there's something that we should look into if we could determine what the cost would be to have the DPW or contract it out to have them cleared, because almost nobody cleared their sidewalks this last storm. And I can't really blame them because the snow cloud pushes the snow onto the sidewalk. You know, all that wonderful snow that we get at the end of our driveway that we have, and then it was turned into almost like concrete because of the rain factors. And it, it was like three days at least that the sidewalks were unusable. And it just seems something for a town of our size and as affluent as we are and the tax dollars that we spend on a variety of things, we should give that some serious consideration, especially if we're trying to promote, you know, you know, people walking and enjoying the, you know, the outdoors and those kind of things. So just something that just came to mind that, you know, it's been kind of a, you know, concern that I've had over the years, and it's something that we should definitely look into. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Ellen Schaefer? Ms. Schaefer? Please go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to comment tonight that I would like to know, I don't know if you can respond, but I noticed that this is obviously only a Zoom meeting and not in-person. And I know that more recently, there had been a council meeting that required in-person of the members. And so I wanted to know why there was not an in-person option offered to the public this evening. Can you speak to that?
Amy, can I answer that question?
It wasn't on the agenda, so.
This is Amy Goins, Assistant Town Solicitor. I would suggest the council vote to approve this for discussion.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Schaefer, I'm not sure I can give you a good answer, but we will. Ms. Schaefer, I'm not sure I can give you a good answer, but we will, I'll make a motion that we vote on that just as soon as we've got everybody who needs to to speak publicly.
Okay, so my my comment and request would be that all town council meetings offer, I appreciate the remote offer for the for the public, certainly hybrid and and remote meetings are a benefit to the to the public. But I would ask that all town council meetings offer an in-person option for the public as well. And I appreciated that you had gone back to that before. And my other comment question, and I don't know if this should, if I should wait until later in the meeting for this part, but I wanted to comment on the renewal of the Declaration of the State of the Emergency for the town. So would I wait now?
Yes, that will be a public hearing and you'll you'll have an opportunity then to to comment on that.
I'll hold my comment for that then. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. The next person who would like to make comment is Tom Remishitis, TR.
Good evening, Tom Remishitis, 1 Howard Street. I too was wondering why we were not holding an in-person meeting, seeing since our other meetings have been in person, except for our last Pox and Rec because it was just coming off the agenda to go to full meeting. So that would be great to hear your answer when you guys decide to vote on talking on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I think Ms. Schaefer already had her hand raised. Anthony Rico. Mr. Rico, please go ahead.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, just one question, Mike. The Park and Recs recently voted and have been discussing the last couple of meetings about later ordinance because of the middle school basketball courts, obviously the issue with trash. And we just wanted, hopefully the council will take that up, Mr. President. We can talk about that because obviously there was a little issue there and we wanted the council's input, how we draft something for, obviously, an ordinance about littering over there.
Yep, that is that is not on our agenda for this time. Didn't sign an ordinance, so I haven't seen a draft ordinance on that. Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard for public comment? Okay. Then I'll make a motion for discussion purposes only to address Ms. Schaefer's question about in-person meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hung, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries. So I'm I'm not sure we have a great answer, except the the governor's orders were sort of in flux and and changing. At one point, we were required to have in-person meetings. At another point, we were permitted to, and then recently it was extended until mid-March that we could have Zoom meetings or hybrid meetings or all-in-person meetings. For purposes of this meeting, in consulting with the town manager, I requested that it be by Zoom. I think we're still close enough to it, sort of in this funny stage that I hope we come out the other side of where we can all get together without masks. But if we are close enough that we need masks, I find it more difficult to articulate and be heard and hear some folks. So I think Zoom is better than the meeting with mask. That's just my personal preference. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's that's the best answer I can give. Anybody else on the council have a comment on that? Okay. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is to discuss and act on the comprehensive annual financial report with Bacon &amp; Company. Yes, and we have Cheryl Lang. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Langifin from Bacon &amp; Company. We completed your audit this past December, so I'm just here to give you a brief overview and answer any questions that you may have. You should have received the audited financial statements and a letter from us in your packet, so I'll just kind of point out the pages that I'm going to go through and give a brief overview and then if you'd like to ask any questions. Starting on page one of the audit report is our opinion, so it was an unmodified opinion that the financial statements are materially correct in accordance with GAAP. Following that is, starting on page four, is management's discussion and analysis, which is like an executive summary prepared by the finance director, kind of gives an overview of the financial statements and what happened during the year. So then the the financial statements start on page sixteen. So the first set of financial statements are the government-wide financial statements. They're full accrual, which means that includes all your capital assets, all your debt, your long-term liabilities, like your pension liabilities. It includes basically everything. So it's split up between governmental activities, which includes things like the general fund, the school, your capital project funds, and then business-type activities, which is essentially the sewer fund. So if you look towards the bottom of page sixteen, the governmental activities ended with a total net position of fifty-one point six million. And the business-type activities ended with almost seventeen million in net position. Of that amount, the governmental activities had an unrestricted deficit of thirteen point two million. And the business-type activities had an unrestricted net position of almost seven point three million. And then you'll see off to the right, there's also the component unit, which is the Barrington Public Library Corporation. That's also presented there as a component unit for your information. On page seventeen is the basically the activity for the year on your government-wide financial statements. So again, towards, you know, three-quarters of the way down the page, you'll see that the governmental activities increased net position of the town by almost seven point six million dollars last year. Your business-type activities increased the net position of the town by about a hundred thousand dollars last year. The next next set of financial statements start on page eighteen, and these are your governmental funds. So this is like your general fund, your bonded construction projects is a major fund, and then all of your other governmental funds are presented in total, and they're broken out in the back. So the balance sheet is on two pages. It's pages eighteen and nineteen. So if you flip to page nineteen, you'll see the general fund ended the year with twenty-six point eight million dollars in fund balance. Of that amount, twenty-one point almost five million was unassigned. Your bonded construction fund ended the year with eight point eight million in fund balance, and then all of your other governmental funds combined ended the year with ten ten point six million. If you go to page twenty-one and twenty-two, that's the activity statement basically for the year for the governmental funds. On page twenty-two, the general fund increased its fund balance by one point six million. Your bonded construction fund decreased its fund balance by one point six million. And then all of your other governmental funds combined increased fund balance by one point seven million. On page twenty-four is your net next set of financial statements, your proprietary funds. It shows the wastewater fund or sewer fund. So that's basically the same information that was in your business-type activity statement. So at the bottom of the page, you'll see that they had that position of almost seventeen million dollars. And then it also has your internal service fund, which is your medical fund for the town. That ended the year with almost three point one million in net position. If you flip the page, oh, I apologize. My light just went off. There it is. Sorry. Automatic lights. I apologize for the interruption. So the page twenty-five, your wastewater or sewer fund increased net position by a hundred thousand, and the internal service fund decreased its net position by a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Following that, on page twenty-eight, is your fiduciary fund. So you basically have your other post-employment benefits trust fund and the Amy Spencer Trust Fund. So towards the end of that statement, you'll see the net position in your OPEB fund was almost nineteen point eight million, and Amy Spencer Trust Fund had about six point one million in that. If you flip to page twenty-nine, you can see the statement that gives you the changes for the year. So your OPEB fund increased its net position by four point nine million, and the Amy Spencer Trust Fund increased its net position by just over a million dollars. Following these financial statements are the notes. So they're they're quite, you know, there's a lot of detail in there. There's a lot of information. They go on for for quite a bit. Then basically following that, there is a section of required supplementary information. So that has information on your OPEB plan, your pension plans, its multi-year information. It kind of gives you shows you the progress that you've been making over the years and funding those plans. So that starts on page eighty-six. The other thing I want to point out is the general fund budget-to-actual information, which is on starts on page ninety-seven and continues on page ninety-eight. So the general fund ended the year with a budgetary surplus on page ninety-eight of just over one point five million dollars. And then just for your informational informational purposes, so at the beginning, I said all of your other governmental funds are combined in one column in the front. So starting on page one oh four is a detail of all of the other funds that make up your other governmental funds, so all your special revenue, your capital project funds, that type of thing. And then just to point out at the back of the report, starting on page one seventy, is the single audit section of the report where we so we test your federal funds and also we have our yellow book reports. So on page one seventy-five, we had no findings with either of those reports. And then also on starting on page one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, it's a listing of basically what you spent in federal funds last year. So that is a very brief overview of the audit report. I don't know if anybody has any questions or Kathy, if I've missed anything that you think I need to highlight?
Kathy was muted, but she said, I think you did a good job. I pretty good reading lips. Counselor Breyer, please.
I just I had a question. So on page nineteen of the financial report, and it actually might be a question for Kathy less so than you, but we talk about when our general fund gets to a certain amount, then we can start reinvesting a portion of any surplus. Would that be the the unassigned general fund line on page nineteen? That's about twenty-one and a half million?
Yes.
Okay. And and we're looking for that to be around twenty-eight or so?
Thirty percent.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, just under. Okay. Thank you. That that was it.
Okay. Any other questions? Schaefer has her hand up, but I think that is for a different item. Counselor Castell?
I I note that that the the practices are the best practices here in Barrington in the sense that the GFOA Certificate of Achievement has been awarded twenty-two years in a row for Barrington, and that's a credit certainly to the proposal. And 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 my my question is, is there any, do you in your in your review see anything down the road that we should take note of, be aware of in in our in our practices going forward?
I mean, you know, as far as the audit goes, anything that we would have found, we would have reported to you, like I just said, in the single audit section, if we had issues or problems that we thought, you know, required your attention, we would report those to you in the audit. But as you know, in audit, we don't look at every single thing. So there could be things that, you know, are out there that we just don't know about, that type of thing. But as far as our audit goes, as far as our audit goes, we didn't become aware of anything that required us, you know, to let you know. There was no management letter this year. There were really, you know, no problems. I mean, I would say the same thing I would say to everybody else, you know, who's in a city or town or state government. I mean, the biggest liabilities you have are pension and OPEB. You know, you've made a ton of progress with your OPEB trust fund. You're in the state pension plan. So you can kind of see, I kind of briefly jumped over that, but that in that RSI section required supplementary information. So it means it's required by GASP, which is governmental GAAP. Starting on page eighty-six, it gives you, you can kind of see, you know, what was our liability? Is it funded? How we how have we been doing? And it has it for each plan. So you have it for your OPEB plan. You have it for your teachers' plan, and then each one of the municipal employees' retirement plans you have. But I mean, I would say that's the biggest concern of any government at this point is is the liabilities. And then I would also point out, there is a summary. So those tables are great to look at if you're looking for like, you know, a snapshot and it kind of gives you the multi-year. They're going to eventually build up to ten years. The other page you could look at for really, you know, quick summary, page forty-six, it has all the town's long-term liabilities like in one table, essentially. So your net pension liabilities were sixty-one point eight million at the end of last year. And you actually had an OPEB asset. So that means it's basically funded at this point. I mean, all of that's based on actual real calculation, so obviously it can change and that type of thing, and the markets change and that all affects it. But, you know, that's really the only thing I can think of, Kathy. I don't know if you have any other comments?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I I know that I fully understand the practices here are optimized and of the highest caliber. I was just looking for anything surveying on the horizon, and you pretty much identified, you know, that for me, so I I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just make a plug for our committee on appropriations. Each each it's become their practice the last four years, maybe more, to have sort of a pension night where they have a meeting and bring in people from the state fund and begin to talk about where we stand and what we ought to do. And that will be coming up. We'll we'll try to to flag that. I don't I don't know the specific date, but it is it is coming up.
I believe it's March twenty-ninth.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Cheryl, thank you very much for your hard work on this.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Kathy, and your team, too.
You're welcome.
So do I hear a motion to receive and accept the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one as presented?
So moved.
Vice President Hung makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hung, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is not the public hearing on on the emergency order. This is a public hearing on a proposed change to hours in a license for one of our liquor licensees. And it involves Sohams AM Inc. doing business as Prince Ali's Kebab, three oh five Sohms Road, Barrington, Rhode Island. And I'm opening the public hearing into this. And I would ask if Counselor Castell, if you want to sort of take us through, take us through this?
Prince Ali's Kebab is is a well-run, highly patronized business in town on Sohms Road. And to enhance their business, as we do to enhance their business, as we do with a, with a lot of restaurants in town, uh, they sought a liquor license. And that liquor license, uh, we granted as a council and we, um, at the time, there was a neighboring business, the preschool, and the ownership of that business, um, wanted to limit the hours, uh, just due to the traffic that was going in and out of their business. Uh, we did have several members of the public come in supporting the liquor license. We'd heard from residents in the, in the neighborhood. And on balance, uh, we, we thought it wise to, to grant the license, but to also respect the wishes of the neighboring business and their concerns, given that it was, that they have preschool and kindergarten age children there. Um, so those hours were somewhat limited. So I view this as something where I think we've, we've found merit as a council in the idea that Prince Ali should have the license. And now that the preschool is under new ownership, the new owners have indicated that they have no objection to essentially normalizing this license, uh, and making it commensurate with the other licenses we grant in town to commensurate with state law and the town code. And so that's what I'm doing today is proposing that we re- we remove the unusual special hourly restrictions on Prince Ali's and let them operate as we do other businesses that serve alcohol in town.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that, that summary. We do have a member of the public who'd like to be heard, Lisa Daft. Uh, Dr. Daft, if we can bring her in and unmute. Please go ahead.
Uh, hi, President Carroll. I, I just have a, um, I just have a general question as far as the town council discussing this item. Um, is it appropriate for someone to take part in this discussion if they have received campaign donations from said owner of this restaurant?
So I don't know the answer to that. I, uh, I don't think there's any, any prohibition. Amy, if, uh, Amy Goins, if, if a member of the council has received a, a campaign contribution, um, uh, from a licensee, is it acceptable to vote on that license?
Um, I would say under the Code of Ethics, it's acceptable, provided there was no quid pro quo. In other words, if the licensee had a discussion with a council member, that they would be making a contribution in exchange for a vote. I would say that would be prohibited and the member should recuse. In the absence of a quid pro quo, uh, I think it's acceptable, um, and members, uh, I think are aware that the Solicitor's Office provides advice on the Code of Ethics, but only the Ethics Commission can issue an opinion on the Code of Ethics that's considered binding on the member.
Okay.
I just, I know in years past, when certain issues came up, um, for all kinds of reasons, people would recuse themselves, um, for doing business with, you know, certain people who are in front of the town council and, um, I guess I would just, you know, I guess assistant town counselor says that, that that person doesn't have to recuse himself for a discussion, but, um, that might be something that might go in front of the ethics board. Thank you.
Okay.
I would, um, may I speak to this? President Carroll?
Sure.
I would just note as a prime sponsor of, um, of this, uh, of this motion, what I expect to make a motion, I have not received any campaign contributions from any proprietor of, of, uh, of any restaurant, frankly, in this town and, and not, uh, not Prince Ali's, uh, Kebab either. And, uh, so I, I don't know what that question addressed, but I, but I, I intend to move forward with the motion after proper comment.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this? Um, let's make sure I've got the motion down. Um, we have a, a draft motion here, but, um, with the motion, simply need to remove the restrictions, um, on hours, Amy?
Yes, without the restrictions on hours that the council imposed when initially granting the license, the hours for the license will just be consistent with what state law allows.
Okay. Okay. Um, okay, Mariana Silverbuck, um, Ms. Silverbuck, we, we'd like to be heard. Please go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I do not. I didn't realize if I pressed it here. I just had my, my plate bumped into the top of my computer. My apologies.
Okay. Okay, um, so seeing no one else from the public, anyone on the council? Okay, oh. Vice President Hum, please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say this, this sounds like a really good idea and a logical idea. So I want to commend Mr. Castell for following up on this. Cause I know it was something that came before the council many months ago and I believe Mr. Castell stayed on top of it and, um, and is following through. So kudos to you and, and thanks for doing that.
Yep, I agree. Um, okay, I am, I am now closing the public hearing. Um, do I hear a motion to amend the restricted hours on the liquor license granted to Prince Ali's Kebab, three oh five Sohms Road, uh, Sohms AM Inc., uh, to remove the restrictions?
So moved.
Uh, the motion made by Counselor Castell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Conway. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
So, um, although there was certainly no quid pro quo, uh, because it will make, um, somebody in the public happy, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Um, Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Um, great. So the next item on our agenda is a presentation, uh, by our town planner. Um, and I appreciate folks kind of bearing with us on this. Um, we've been doing a lot on community resilience kind of in the background and, and we're now sort of getting to the point where we really need to get some more buy-in from the public. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss community resilience. Um, and it's going to be a bit of a good news, bad news situation. Uh, the bad news is that Barrington is extremely vulnerable to severe weather events that'll bring flooding and wind. We're surrounded by water. The other part of the bad news is that there's nothing we can do to stop those severe weather events from coming. They're acts of God. The good news is that we've been doing a great deal and we continue to do a great deal to limit the damage from and to recover from those events. We can take steps now that will help us bounce back after the storms that are coming. The focus of our discussion tonight is not going to be on our emergency plans. We have those. We have them in place. That's for another, we can have another discussion on that and we'll be, we have done and we'll do tabletop exercises. Storm is coming. What do we do? Make sure all the vehicles are gassed up and so on. There's binders on shelves out there that tell us just what to do. Tonight, we'll be mostly talking about the time before and after the storms and less about during the storms. We talk about resilience. We're really talking about bouncing back. As I said, there's nothing we can do to stop those severe weather events. Uh, one way to think about resilience is like a rubber ball dropping. How high will it bounce after it hits the ground depends on how resilient that community is. We want our community to rebound quickly and for that ball to bounce back higher than it was dropped. So what are we going to talk about tonight? Uh, first, we'll talk about some bad news, um, which can be tough to hear. It's our vulnerability. We need to, we need to talk about this because we really need to understand our weak points in order to prepare. Uh, we live in a beautiful waterfront community, but we're surrounded by water and that water's rising. The latest estimates from NOAA are that we should expect about ten to twelve inches of sea level rise in the next thirty years. That's on average, uh, daily average. And, and by the way, that's NOAA, N-O-A-A, not Noah, N-O-A-H. Although the biblical Noah could probably teach us something about preparing for a flood. Uh, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration. Now every time we talk about sea level rise, I'm kind of surprised by the number of people who don't believe it will happen or don't want to believe it. Uh, if ninety-nine out of a hundred doctors told you that you have high cholesterol, I don't think you should really keep going until you find that hundredth doctor tells you that you're fine. We're not even going to try and persuade those folks tonight because I think those folk, folks, even those who, uh, don't believe in sea level rise ought to be, uh, interested in what we're talking about. Uh, the, the vast majority of scientists do believe in sea level rise, but if you don't like what those scientists have to say, then I, I guess I'd ask, how do you feel about historians? Um, eighty-three years ago, Barrington was hit by the Great Hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight. The category three hurricane with devastating effect on, on the whole state of Rhode Island. You go to the white church, um, the Barrington Congregational Church, and you look at the high-level markers on the wall, you can see where the flood waters came. That was in nineteen thirty-eight. That, that's not some point in the future with sea level rise. That's already happened. You can see similar things if you go to the yacht club and look next to the fireplace. Barrington has already experienced extreme flood events. Uh, nineteen thirty-eight was probably, um, the worst one. But shortly after that, we had the nineteen fifty-four hurricane, which was considered a one-hundred-year hurricane. Um, and the next time you drive through the intersection in front of the white church, if we have the same flood depth as the nineteen fifty-four hurricane, imagine your vehicle being entirely submerged beyond the roof. The flood death, depth at a hundred-year storm was over nine and a half feet at that intersection. So this is, this is serious. We're not, we're not talking about a few inches here or there. We're talking, uh, the possibility of some catastrophic events. That's kind of a preview of the bad news. It's not fun to hear, but the good news is that we have been preparing and we continue to prepare. You're going to hear in a few minutes about some of the steps we've already taken in terms of our hiring. Um, you'll hear from our planner who a big part of the reason that she was hired was her expertise on resilience. Um, our town manager was hired with this as our number one uh, priority. And, and in fact, uh, a few weeks ago, the town council all agreed that um, community resilience and, uh, the, the concerns about these things are our number one priority. You'll also hear about some steps we've taken in terms of the money we've applied for and received in grants and in terms of our commitment to preparedness and resilience generally. Some of the stuff, as I said, will be tough to hear. And I know that there are some people who are going to be concerned that we're driving down property values. Um, I, I should note that there was an article or a story on WPRI that contained the wrong information. And, and that's disturbing. Um, but if we provide accurate information, I don't think that we're driving down property values. I think that people who are looking at buying houses in Barrington have heard of sea level rise. I think these folks will already know before they sign on the dotted line whether flood insurance is required. We can't change the fact that we, like any waterfront community are vulnerable, but people factor that in already when deciding to buy a home in a waterfront community. I think that we can actually increase our property values. We can become a model for resilience for the nation. In concrete terms, the better prepared we are, the lower your flood insurance costs will be. You heard about that just a little while ago. We get percentages off the more prepared we are. And so we're trying to do that in part because we want to get lower, um, uh, premiums on our flood insurance. That's a, that's a very good reason to do it. But in part because all of the factors that are built into getting that are important in terms of preparing. In any case, we must do this work. Benjamin Franklin once said that failing to prepare is preparing to fail. We won't fail and we will prepare. And we will be resilient. With that, I'm going to turn this over to our new town planner, Teresa Cream. Teresa?
Thank you, President Carroll, and thank you, um, counselors for the opportunity to share uh, information with you related to our, um, risk profile in Barrington and what the Planning, Building and Resiliency Department has been doing about it in partnership with other departments across the town. And we're carrying on the great work that has already been started by the former town planner, Phil Hervey, and our wonderful staff in Planning, Building and Resiliency. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I have about, um, ten to fifteen minutes of slides that I'll share with everyone. Um, and we'll start off by, um, highlighting. Can you get down here? Sorry. The basic messages and the basic thought process of getting prepared as a community. The first step is to know our risk. And fortunately, the state of Rhode Island, um, is proud to say that they are kind of ahead of the game when it comes to mapping and modeling our coastline. Our Coastal Resources Management Council prepared a plan that completed, um, concluded in twenty eighteen that mapped and modeled all four hundred and twenty miles of coastline, all twenty-one coastal communities for storm surge impacts and sea level rise, and then a different combination of different storm surge and sea level scenarios across the whole state. We don't know where storms will land when they come up the coast, but we know now depending on the scenarios that we can show through our mapping system called Storm Tools in Rhode Island, that we can prepare for those water levels that may be brought by different types of storms from a nor'easter up to a major hurricane. And that helps us be empowered as a community to make a plan and take meaningful action. So we have many plans and reports that we've developed as a town that we're required to update, our comprehensive plan, our hazard mitigation plan and others. And we have projects that we've seen implemented along our coastline. This is showing Barrington Beach and the removal of asphalt to have more pervious surface at the coastline and planting, uh, different types of grasses and, um, dune systems to, again, make our, um, our coastline more resilient to coastal forcing. Um, many of us are probably familiar with seeing graphs like this. I do thank the Resilience and Energy Committee Chair Lynn Carter for these graphs showing the overall increase in Rhode Island temperature trend since eighteen ninety-five. I point out at nineteen eighty, we started increasing our, uh, average temperature annually, um, significantly up until now. Um, this goes until about, I think, twenty eighteen. But you can see that increase, um, at the right part, the right end of this, this graph. So we have seen an overall increase in average temperature in Rhode Island. We've also seen an overall increase, although it does vary, uh, year to year in our precipitation trends. And we are seeing rainfall happen, um, in stronger bursts. This past year, we had Hurricane Ida that came up from New Orleans and dumped about six inches of rain on us here in Barrington over a several hour period. Um, so we're seeing these intense events. We have, um, uh, sorry, the floods of two thousand and ten, and we're seeing again, these, these really intense rains, rain events that are bringing localized flooding. And when you combine that with coastal flooding or coastal high tide, that can really present problems for certain areas of town with vulnerable infrastructure and, um, and properties and assets. Sea level rise, um, is been, has been documented since nineteen thirty in the state of Rhode Island. There's a tide gauge in Newport that has been collecting data since nineteen thirty. We've had about ten inches of sea level rise since nineteen thirty. And I will tell you that in my past work with the Coastal Resources Management Council here in Rhode Island to develop the Shoreline Change Special Area Management Plan, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration has changed the sea level projections moving forward three times. Back in twenty twelve, before Superstorm Sandy hit Rhode Island, we were planning for as a state three to five feet by twenty-one hundred. And that was in the books in our, um, coastal regulations in state law. In twenty twelve, NOAA released new numbers that estimated about three feet by twenty fifty and six and a half feet by twenty-one hundred. I indicated on these graphs, these, that you see in front of you, the thirty-year mortgage timeframe. So we're at twenty twenty-two. If you go out to a thirty-year mortgage, you think about buying a house now, will my house be wet or dry in, um, twenty fifty? So we were planning for about two feet, uh, sorry, I misspoke, two feet by twenty fifty and then again, six and a half feet by twenty-one hundred. Then in twenty seventeen, five years later, they re, um, released the estimates again to increase it to three feet by twenty fifty and nine and a half feet by twenty-one hundred. Now, this points to the uncertainty of the science in projecting out to twenty-one hundred. But I do want to point your attention to the, the, how the curves are all kind of mushed together between, let me get my cursor here, between twenty twenty and twenty fifty. So twenty fifty is indicated here with this blue circle in both graphs. And so you can see all of these curves are pretty close together, which means there's a very, you know, there, there's, there's some uncertainty of there's some uncertainty of which curve will follow by twenty fifty, but they're pretty close together. So it could be anywhere from six inches to three feet. As you get past twenty fifty, the curves start to really diverge. So it's difficult to anticipate what the flood risk or what the sea level risk will be past twenty fifty. So there's been a revision of these numbers yet again, five, so we had twenty twelve, twenty seventeen, now we're in twenty twenty-two. This is hot off the press, just was released a month ago. So you can see the logo soup across the top here. We have NOAA, NASA, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the U.S. Geological Survey, Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Department of Defense, all contributed to this new global and regional sea level rise scenario report for the United States. And this is available online. If you just put in a search engine, twenty-twenty-two sea level rise technical report, you'll find this report. And the punchline for Rhode Island, we haven't received the graph, the curves yet to show what the regionalized estimates will be, but the punchline is that we're looking at ten to twelve inches between now and twenty fifty. So it looks like that our sea level estimate has decreased a little bit compared to the twenty seventeen estimates. With that said, we also have to remember that we do get these moon tides, these periodic extreme high tides. And so when we think about our average daily sea levels and the tide cycle of what we're seeing on our shoreline, we know that when we get a full moon, a super moon, a blood moon, whatever we call them, whatever they're referred to in the time, we do see several times a year these higher-than-normal and higher-than-predicted high tides. So we have to prepare for those water levels. Even if they only happen twelve times a year, we still don't want to be caught by surprise. So that is the importance of us tracking the sea level rise estimates from NOAA and all of these different federal agencies. One thing I forgot to mention on this last slide is that our CRMC, our Coastal Resources Management Council in Rhode Island, has adopted into state law the high curve, the NOAA high curve, which is, on the top graph is the pink curve, on the bottom graph is the red curve. And CRMC did that because they felt it was important to be prepared and not caught off guard by estimating lower-than-expected water levels so that we are right half the time. So we wanted to be right most of the time in predicting these future water levels. So CRMC did write into state law that they are following the high curve, which means that we can change, adapt those numbers, whatever the high curve says, we can follow that curve when it's updated every five years. So with this new update, where we are still waiting for the graphs to come out, we are, the punchline from this report is that it's a lower-than-previously-predicted estimate for twenty fifty. So again, instead of three feet by twenty fifty, we're really looking at two feet by twenty fifty. And it's important to note, it's relative to the year two thousand. So I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you, but what we were planning for is now about a foot less than we were planning for per state law before last month. So we have reached out to CRMC. They have released a statement, which I'll share in a minute. What are the factors that contribute to sea level rise up here in the northeast? We have, when the thermal expansion of seawater with temperatures increase, seawater expands, which rises the seas very slightly. We do have the melting of land-based ice sheets in Antarctica and Greenland contributing new water to our oceans. We have land subsidence, our land is sinking in Rhode Island from the last ice age, when the ice sheets retreated, land rebounded or popped back up, and now it's slowly sinking about two millimeters per year. That's courtesy of our state geologists. And we also have the Gulf Stream, which has an impact on how water is pushed up the east coast and lands on our shorelines here in Rhode Island. So this is a nice schematic that was included in that new twenty-twenty-two report to show what are the different factors contributing to sea level rise. So here are the four punchlines from the new report that was released last month. One, the next thirty years of sea level rise. We're looking to ten to twelve inches. In the next thirty years, it'll be as much as the rise measured over the last hundred years. So they're saying we've had ten inches since nineteen thirty. We're going to see that same, new ten inches by twenty fifty. Punchline number two, we're expecting more damaging flooding because of these more intense and frequent storm events that are going to come and put a lot of forcing, a lot of energy on our shorelines. We need to be prepared by not only the coastal floods, but also the heavy rain events from these storms that park on top of New England, swirl around, and dump a lot of water on us. So we have both forcings, both coastal and also precipitation. The third takeaway is that emissions matter, and I'll talk about what the town of Barrington is doing related to our carbon footprint, to our overall emissions and how we're reducing our contributions to carbon reduction across within town. And the last thing is continual tracking. So we want to keep tracking how sea level is changing. Unfortunately for us, our coastal municipalities, our CRMC, our Coastal Resources Management Council is keeping up with this. They are our connection to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and they are our touchstone for getting the best available science out to the cities and towns across the state. So CRMC's statement is that we've been focusing on the NOAA high curve per the NOAA-Edel's twenty seventeen report. We have online mapper called Storm Tools, which I'll show you in a minute, that shows how properties across the whole state could be affected by coastal storms and sea level rise. We also have an application process. If you want to get a permit from CRMC, you are required to use Storm Tools as part of an assessment that gets filed as part of your application to CRMC and then gets recorded on title. And the punchline here with the new report, while the twenty-twenty-two high curve projections appear to have decreased, there is far more certainty with these future sea level rise projections based on the multiple lines of evidence. And they go on to note that CRMC and Rhode Island must be, continue to be vigilant. And that just says between now and twenty fifty, those lines that are close together really have been honed in on to have more certainty that we're going to see that ten to twelve inches of sea level rise by twenty fifty relative to today. Okay, so what does that look like in Barrington? So what we're showing here is the, what's called a one-percent annual chance. It used to be called the hundred-year storm. And a hundred-year storm, it confused a lot of people because you think you're going to get this big storm, and you're good for a hundred years, and you won't see that storm again for a hundred years. So we had nineteen fifty-four Hurricane Carol, a lot of photographs that show the devastation that that caused. Of course, the nineteen thirty-eight hurricane caused a lot of damage across Rhode Island, but nineteen fifty-four Hurricane Carol also did a lot of damage. And that water level was consistent with what we are, what the scientists have projected for the one-hundred-year or one-percent annual chance. So what that means is every year there's a one-percent chance, and this is getting into probabilities and all that, you know, climatology, meteorological science stuff. There's a one-percent chance that this water level could happen in the town of Barrington. If we get a direct hit from a hurricane, if, 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 there are a lot of different factors and variables that go into us seeing this water level, but every year we have a one-percent chance of this water level happening. So this is today. This is our vulnerability or possibility of storms today. If we zoom in to the high school and also the park and ride in the White Church across the street, so here's the high school, here's the White Church, this one that's labeled four sixty-one here. We have County Road, we have Federal Road, we have the bridge over here, and the park and ride. I've turned on the layers from Storm Tools for two feet and three feet of sea level rise. So the two-foot sea level scenario matches up with this new data that came out to say we're going to bet, see ten to twelve inches of sea level rise between now and twenty fifty. The three-foot is if we have a moon tide on top of this. So that's how I want you all to think about this. So the two-foot is what we're now expecting by twenty fifty. The three-foot level, that darker blue, so the lighter blue is the two-foot, so it inundates a little bit of the park and ride. The three-foot is this darker blue that crosses the street into the high school. So we have, in Barrington, localized areas of risk from two tides a day, every day, by mid-century. But really, our building count is pretty low in terms of what will be flooded by by daily tidal cycles in twenty fifty. And I'll show you the table for that, the data for that in a minute. If we get a hurricane, if we get a nineteen fifty-four Hurricane Carol type of hurricane, the story changes. We're going to see, in that park and ride, about twelve feet of water relative to the ground surface, under a nineteen fifty-four Hurricane Carol, or that one-percent annual chance storm with the two feet of sea level rise. So this is our mid-century scenario for a major hurricane direct hit on Barrington. And this is, matches up pretty well with the one-hundred-year, the, sorry, the special flood hazard area, the one-hundred-year flood plain that we have in town. But with two feet of sea level rise, it's expanded a little bit to account for those higher daily tide cycles. We also have had maps drawn for the whole town to show vulnerable roadways from the, all different sea level scenarios. This is showing that three-foot of sea level rise with a Hurricane Carol scenario. So the water depths are down here in the corner. So this is, the yellow is about a twelve-to-fourteen-foot water depth that I just mentioned in the previous slide. And the section of County Road from the intersection by the White Church down past the high school is projected to have twelve-to-fourteen feet of water, water depth along that stretch of roadway. So what this tells us is we may have to really start thinking now about our state road, about our road network in town and where those vulnerabilities might be if and when we get hit by any kind of storm. And we'll have to think through what a hurricane versus a nor'easter looks like and what impacts those storm events and that forcing is having on our roadway systems. This is all meant for us to be proactive and really understand what, think ahead of what the impacts could be to our road network. And so that we can try to fundraise and plan accordingly in partnership with DOT. Storm Tools also, the CRMC also offers a building count of how many structures are exposed. They use the E-nine-one-one database from the State Police to overlay the flood layers on top of those structures, and you can see the groupings of commercial, industrial, public service, residential utility. This is done for all twenty-one coastal towns, so this is just Barrington. And for three feet of sea level rise, punch again is our moon tide projection for twenty fifty. We have only twenty exposed buildings, and that means there might be seawater at the base of twenty buildings in town, which is about point-three percent of our building stock. And if we get a Hurricane Carol on top of that, it's almost fifty-six percent of our building stock will likely have seawater on their properties. When we look at the two-foot scenario, I did, I did just pull up that that graph before this presentation. The numbers are pretty similar between two feet and three feet. We only have two buildings that are exposed to saltwater in the two tides a day, every day, sea level scenario with two feet of sea level rise. So that's, it's between two and twenty with the two-foot to three-foot scenario. And it goes from thirty-three hundred to thirty-five hundred structures in town under a Hurricane Carol event. So that data is all available. I'm happy to answer questions about that if needed going forward. And we also have indicators of this, of past storm events around town, photographs. These photographs show our water level markers in and around town. I believe this is the Yacht Club. We have the Hurricane Carol and Hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight in these yellow boxes over here on this photograph. And this is the Hurricane Carol water level. We also have historic photographs of the Matthewsson Boathouse surrounded by floodwaters in nineteen thirty-eight over here on the left. And we have a pile of sailboats here. It says a cluster of pleasure craft lifted in a group right onto the main highway bridge in nineteen thirty-eight. So this, you know, helps us, remind us that we've seen these water levels in Barrington in the past. So we, first of all, can't be complacent to think that we're not going to get this storm event, these kinds of storm events again. We've been very fortunate. We haven't had one in the recent past, which I refer to as storm amnesia. We have to be, continue to be vigilant with our, with our planning and preparedness activities in town. This is inside of the White Church. By the stairs, we have a nineteen thirty-eight high watermark here in the White Church foyer. So we have evidence of past water levels in the town. Even as recently as January seventeenth, so less than two months ago, we had a storm surge event. It was a nor'easter on the morning of January seventeenth at a moon tide, at a peak of the moon tide. And for one tide cycle, this is the Tides and Currents page from National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. At seven-thirty in the morning of January seventeenth, it was a Monday morning, we had a three-foot storm surge across Rhode Island. This is from the Newport Tide Gauge. And so this is documented and verified that we had three feet of storm surge. And here's what it looked like at the park and ride next to the White Church. So this, actually, this water level does match up pretty well to our two- and three-foot sea level scenarios that we have in Storm Tools. So this is all saltwater that is sitting there waiting to retreat after the next tide cycle. So this is a storm surge event, but it does give us a nice window into what three feet of sea level rise is likely to look like in this, in this area, two to three feet of sea level rise. Okay, so that is the evidence. That is the know-your-risk part of the program. I'll speed up a little bit in terms of talking about making a plan and taking action. So we have a lot of work going on in the Planning, Building, and Resiliency Department, also working with Public Works, the Recreation and Senior Services Department. We have a lot of cross-collaboration among our departments in town. We are embarking on, after tonight's meeting, starting our hazard mitigation and flood plain management plan effort to get a draft to Rhode Island EMA for approval in June, so we can make sure we are current with our hazmat plan in August. And tonight, we just authorized the steering committee for that project. We also have the first operation, the Recovery Plan in the state, that there was a recovery workshop back in November, and we're talking about tabletop exercises to do simulations and talk about response and preparedness and recovery across different departments in town, to make sure that we are on it when we are called to action in response to these hazards and these threats. As already mentioned, we're applying to be part of the community rating system, which results in a lot of activities across town to reduce our overall risk profile to coastal and flood hazards. And if we, when we get into the program, we will be able to pass on savings on flood insurance premiums to policyholders across Barrington. So that is underway. And yes, as Kim mentioned, it was submitted in March twenty twenty-one, not July twenty twenty-one. So thank you for that, Kim. Apologies for the misinfo. We also, in terms of our carbon reduction efforts, we have a strategic energy plan that was passed in twenty eleven, and we're looking to update that plan and working with our Resilience and Energy Committee. So we have several different projects underway. Two of them is a fleet, one is a fleet study, where we're looking at the town's fleet of vehicles and how we can go electric and reduce our carbon footprint by using electric, by replacing our end-of-life vehicles with electric vehicles. So our police department is looking at the first police cruisers, the police fleet in the state of Rhode Island to be electric. And we also have an electric vehicle charging station effort to get charging stations available. These are two shown in this photograph at Town Hall. We have monthly reports. You can see in the graph at the bottom that shows the use of these charging stations. These two charging stations can charge an electric vehicle in about twenty-five minutes. But there are other, there's also a couple down at Police Cove Park that take a little bit longer. And we're now talking about equipping our public works and public safety buildings with electric vehicle charging stations in addition to the fleet replacement with electric vehicles moving forward. And there are also programs focused on solar and community, what's called community electricity aggregation, which I won't go into detail, but it's how can we offer offer electric service to our residents and allow the option of getting your electricity from renewable sources in a special program that we're involved with four other towns in the state of Rhode Island. So more to come on that electricity aggregation program in a future meeting. But we have a lot of different efforts to reduce our carbon footprint across town. We also have many site-specific projects underway. We've, Kim Jacobs and Phil Hervey have done an incredible job of fundraising and writing grants and getting support in with a lot of different partners across the state of Rhode Island to build projects that reduce our coastal risk. And this is one that just went into the municipal resilience program for the infrastructure, Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. There are five, six, seven different projects shown here that are shoreline adaptation sites, tree trench best management practices to manage stormwater across our streets and along our coastline. We have an active project at Walker Farm. We have a neighborhood resilience plan in the Bay Spring neighborhood. And I can go on and on about the different site-specific projects. We will be putting all of these on a collective map so we can show the progress that we're making to reduce our cumulative footprint, our cumulative risk profile across town. The Planning, Building, and Resiliency Department is also working with the town manager's office to do more outreach and education, also in partnership with our Resilience and Energy Committee to get guest speakers, public lectures and workshops, do field walks and site visits, and work with the press, and also communicate with our state legislators and other elected officials to continue to bring the best available resources and science and personnel and concepts and innovations to our town to contribute to resilience. We are also talking about, this is not funded yet, or We are also talking about, this is not uh funded yet, or we don't have um. A a a clear game plan yet for this, but we are aspiring to create the fir- town's first climate action plan. We did our municipal resilience program back in twenty nineteen that information is available online, where it was a workshop to. Bring together all of the different um aspirations and efforts that we're doing in town in one place. So that we could apply for grant money to build projects that reduce our risk profile. And add to our our cumulative adaptation. So we want to be able to look at um to pull all of the things I just mentioned. The um strategic energy plan, the hazard mitigation plan, the municipal resilience program into one umbrella document that is a one stop shop for all of these different initiatives. So the town of Chapel Hill, um Burlington, Vermont, um Southeast Florida, so all those towns in Southeast Florida, north of Miami. Um are part of this effort that's called the Florida Climate Compact. We can learn from them and bring those best practices to Barrington, so we can create this climate action plan. And lastly, we are on deck to update our comprehensive plan and um it's due in twenty twenty five, so we'll start it in twenty twenty three. To basically build in everything I just talked about into our comprehensive plan update, which is our blueprint for the town for the next ten years after twenty twenty five. Or sorry, the next twenty years after twenty twenty five, we have to update it every ten years. Um so we'll be starting that in a few um a month, about a year and a half. And um with that, I have gone through the three concepts of know our risks, so we can make a plan and take action. We've been um very fortunate, I think, in Barrington to be a leader in a lot of these areas across the state. And also um, you know, acknowledge that we have a risk profile, but we also are fortunate in that we have. Uh areas at risk that we can manage, I think, long term. But you know, as far as the the big storm events, we do really have to be vigilant and making sure we don't get complacent with evacuations. With um with just general preparedness for losing power, how do we, you know, uh. Get by on the first seventy two hours after a storm comes and goes if the power goes out? Um and and what can we do to prepare, uh withstand and uh recover after storm events take place? So with that, a lot of these small projects are really adding to our cumulative resilience and adaptation to future stressors on our on our town. And I'm happy to uh take any questions and thank you so much for taking the time to um to listen.
Uh thank you, Teresa. Um anyone from the council have any questions? Or comments?
I do not have a question. I just have a comment and say I'm so thankful that Teresa is our town planner and uh with this incredible experience that she has to. To put this together and prepare us. Um it's, it's shocking. It's not, I would say it's um. You know, it's, it's not great. And then you, when you see the actual shaded areas, you realize how, how not great it is. But I'm very thankful that you are looking at this and finding ways to um mitigate our risks. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Uh Councilor Cassell?
I I would echo that as well. We're really fortunate to have you on board. Um in in. I was wondering, with regard to North Carolina, uh Chapel Hill, Burlington, South Southeast Florida. And on the one hand, I don't want to put tactics ahead of, you know, logistics and strategy. And I understand that that climate action plan is. Is 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 a project in the making, but specifically with regard to those communities, there must have been something that drew you to. Their plans that you found appealing. So in terms of sort of setting the chess pieces on the chessboard a little bit. What 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 can we expect? If we look at those plans that would really apply to us in terms of their strategy and in their action plan?
I will speak to the Southeast Florida Climate Compact. I've been following them since two thousand nine. Um because I I think they've done, they're a county based government in that regard, in the way that they've structured that effort across all of Southeast Florida. And it's a much bigger scale than we have here in Rhode Island. Um but what they've done really well is identify adaptation action areas, is to really hone in on what is the ideal scale. Of planning to move forward with tangible actions, because you can't do it all. And we talk about climate action, you could talk about. Heat island effects and vector borne disease and drought. And there are different, a bunch of different factors. Um so you know, Southeast Florida being very flood prone as we are. That aspect of the climate, of the adaptation action plan, uh adaptation action areas. Of that Southeast Climate Compact, I think are very transferable to what we're, what we have here. Um the North Carolina, the Chapel Hill Plan does a really great job of. Summarizing all the different sustainability initiatives that reduce carbon footprint, um make us more efficient in terms of uh. You know, reducing our waste, because our, you know, central landfill is not going to be around forever. So how do we reduce our our waste and be more efficient with our our resource use? And also um think about adapting to climate stressors. In Chapel Hill, it's not coastal, so that is definitely an aspect that's missing. But in terms of the way that plan is structured, it's a really nice model for us to try to fit all of our moving parts into um there. So those are the two I can comment. I have not had a chance to look at Burlington. There's also a group called ICLI that has some really good um guidelines for these kinds of climate action plans. So I think we have some good models, but we can also become a model by crafting our own and being the first in the state to do that. Um since we are, so um we have several vulnerabilities we need to address, but we have time to address them, which is um I think. Does give you some uh hope for us being able to stay on top of this and do it right.
And and what what types of, again, I you know, just, I I obviously don't have the the the. Anywhere near the expertise of somebody like you on the subject, but so I ask you such a question. Are 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 we looking at just sort of simple things like, you know, uh can we restore or create marshlands or or peak? Areas, you know, as as a town, or or should planting trees be the approach or walls or? Um or do we have to think bigger and look for federal or state funding for ditches and levees and. Uh hardening our infrastructure? I mean, what, or is it all on the table at this point? I know, and again, at the risk of being too early in the process, and and I know focusing on tactics instead of strategy and logistics. Um I just wanted to get a sense so that we can sort of lay the groundwork and start to have that discussion in town as to what we might be looking at. Uh initiating in the future, both at our level, at a municipal level, and then also the bigger asks that we'd be searching for from state and federal sources.
Yeah, I do think it's all on the, most of what you mentioned is all on the table. We'll of course be limited by what we can do. Um for example, CRMC does not permit new seawalls. And we can get maintenance permits for existing seawalls, but to get a new seawall is a huge ask. And I don't know, I I just don't think we should bank on that. But with these circumstances changing, um I think that site specific uh project level. Uh scale that we've been doing really well with these end of road retrofits, tearing up asphalt, planting bioswales to absorb stormwater. Is such a good start for us to show success in these small scale areas that it can really just be incremental in how we approach. Site by site, neighborhood by neighborhood. Um and if we need a uh flapper valve or a flood vent, uh sorry, not a flood vent, a um. Flood control structure on certain areas of town, then we look at those site by site. Um as far as salt marsh migration, you know, there is an area at Latham Park that maybe we stop mowing that and we may see some marsh grasses uh come into that area. Or there are other areas of town where we can allow salt marshes to migrate inland for, with um with rising seas. Um Allen's Cove has, you know, so I could keep going on and on about project level, but I do think that. We know where our hotspots are around town. We've done a really good job of mapping and modeling all of this. And now it's just tackling these projects one by one. And being vigilant about finding the financial resources and not missing an opportunity to get that grant money in hand. Um and use that big pair of scissors that Phil now has in his office to do ribbon cuttings when we have these projects completed. Um so that's, I think, you know, again, site by site.
Okay, the the other last thing is just that the 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 high curve, you know, and some of the estimates apparently have decreased. We're talking. They're estimating, the high curve is one thing, you're like two feet, I think you said, and then then maybe twelve inches is is a rough estimate is what we're looking at over thirty years. Um but the confidence level has increased, isn't that? Is that accurate saying that's what you're describing with curves coming together?
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry.
Do you know the technical reasons for each of those things or why? Why, you know, wha- what what changed about the modeling or why that this, the revisions? And I know these revisions keep happening. Um and so the thing I worry about is when you have new revisions, there will be a reason. Um for some people to have less confidence. And actually, the confidence level has increased. And so if people understand why that might be, then then that could help us communicate uh the reasons for that.
Yeah, because the report just came out, I mean, my first uh call was the CRMC. To ask them what they were going to, how they were interpreting those results, because I think as a municipal planner. Um my first call would be to the state expert on this. To say, what do you, what do you need the municipalities to know? So CRMC is working with NOAA to understand how they update all of their tools that they've made available for municipalities. To understand how those number, how those numbers have changed and what numbers we should be using to estimate future risk. As far as what's caused the, you know, i- it's it's a best available science story. Um if you read the report, they do explain the, all the references that went into, you know, getting those numbers back in twenty seventeen. And how new uh science has has modified those numbers. Um I'm hearing a lot of chatter among the uh scientists that I used to work with when I was at the University of Rhode Island. Not everybody is is on board with these reduced estimates for Rhode Island. So that's why I'm not, I'm very uncomfortable with commenting on on that, because I feel like everybody is still absorbing this information after it was just released a month ago. Um so I'm sort of in wait and see mode to see how CRMC puts this out for us to use as municipalities. And really rely on the scientists in the state of Rhode Island to keep up with. The best available science from NOAA, NASA, EPA, all the feds that trickle down the science to our state decision makers. Um so that's really the best I can offer at this time.
Well, at least the greater certainty is helpful. And I I'm just, like I said, like everyone else, I I'm really glad you're here. And uh and I think we're, we're as a community ready to attack the problem and I'm, and I'm glad you're you're on it. Thanks.
Happy to be here.
Anyone else on the council? Anyone uh have any questions from our attendees? Jack Siegel, Mr. Siegel. I think you can unmute yourself, sir. Mr. Siegel, we can't hear you.
Okay.
There you go. We got you.
So so thanks. Uh I I'm I'm really fascinated by the mapping tools and the interactive activity that you were able to display. And I'm hoping that um. Public will be provided access or at least directions so we can kind of look at it ourselves. Um it'd probably be more effective. Uh my 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 real que- everything's very fascinating. My question is, um the the three communities you selected. Um which were were uh in North Carolina and in Vermont and in Florida are all quite different. Uh topographically and geol- geographically, Barrington. Uh North Carolina, it's a hundred and forty six miles to the ocean, Burlington sixty seven miles to the ocean. Southeast Florida is in Hurricane Alley. Um I I I just would like to see maybe you compare to similar communities that that are located on bays. Um that have uh sort of natural barriers to the ocean. I mean, even taking uh. Data from Newport, which is ocean facing, kind of skews things to what would be probably the most accurate for us. And I'm wondering if you have um located or 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 sought out. Uh communities that have similar topography as us for their plans.
I'm happy to respond. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Sure. Um tha- thank you for that question. It's it's, I I feel like a broken record when I say Annapolis, Charleston. Annapolis, Maryland, Charleston, South Carolina, and Norfolk, Virginia. And I should have mentioned those communities throughout this conversation. Um because the Chesapeake Bay has um a lot of similarities to us, a lot of communities in New Jersey. I spent my summers going to Ocean City, New Jersey, and so a lot of the barrier systems in New Jersey, I think, are very comparable to what we have here. You know, the Delaware Bay, Chesapeake Bay, um Norfolk, Virginia, I have kind of a crush on because they've adopted a coastal resilience overlay um zone in their zoning. So getting a little zoning nerdy. Um Norfolk, Virginia, I think, is a really good uh model for us to follow. But the mod, but the um the um model plans that I referenced with North Carolina, Vermont and Florida. Were to develop a climate action plan, not just focused on flooding. So I think that's an important distinction that, you know, we're looking at those plans that are all encompassing of all the different aspects of of climate adaptation, not just for flooding. But uh rest assured that I have been working to stay on top of what's going on in um in Charleston. South Carolina, Norfolk, Virginia, and Annapolis, Maryland is is comparable communities to what we have here. Thank you.
And uh that's a very good point uh Mr. Siegel made about accessing these, very simple to access them, stormtools.com. Just look for stormtools.com and you go through it. And uh if you're like me, pick the beginner. Um there's a, there's a beginner tab that you can click on that gives you. Sort of fewer options on uh looking at scenarios, but one of the simplest options. That shows up in the first um layer is the hundred year storm. And you can sort of look in that, you can zoom in on your house. Um you could zoom in on your neighborhood and you can see what it was like basically in nineteen fifty four. And what we would uh expect it to be like in um. In if we were hit with one of those one percent storms that we haven't had. Um in in quite some time.
Just a quick correction, uh President Carroll, I apologize. Um I did put the link to Storm Tools and it's not stormtools.com. That is a dead link.
Oh.
So the correct link is in, is in the um chat and also CRMC's website has a link to Storm Tools. Sorry, thank you.
What is it, org or gov?
It's a longer URL now, unfortunately, because we had to re, they, URI had to redesign it.
I think if you did, I think if you Google Storm Tools, I usually get there.
Yes. If you Google Storm Tools, you're good.
Yeah, if you Google Storm Tools, you're trying to get to something called Beach Samp, but it'll uh that'll take you there. Um. Okay, it looks like we've heard from everyone. Um before we move on, um. I know this was a lot to digest and there is a lot that's uh that we're talking about and and the impacts um. Are pretty varied. The the work that we need to do to address it is varied. Um some of it involves finding a place to put the water, when the water recedes, that that. Image of the park and ride at the white church was a good one. What do you do when, how quickly can you get that water to recede? And and those are things we have been doing for years and working on so that we can have a place where the water can kind of recede. Really not, I mean, we talk about sea level rise and I, for me at least, the the image used to be of. Um you know, a- am I going to be up to my ankles walking down my own street? That's really not the 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 biggest concern. That's that's a pretty minor concern about where it's going to be on an everyday basis. The big concern is the moon tides, the king tides and the big storms. And what we're going to see, we know we're going to see a big storm. Um we're due, it it happens, it's part of living on the coast. Um. But we anticipate in the future that we're going to see more of them and more frequently. And so that's what we want to prepare for. Um when you look at those, those maps, you'll see. That in that hundred year storm, the high school, parts of the high school are going to be underwater. Uh we want to prepare for that, not because the water won't recede, it will. But what kind of damage is it going to do if it gets in there? And how can we protect and uh limit that? What what steps can we take today to make the day after the storm better is is kind of what we're talking about. At the beginning of our discussions, we're going to talk about a lot of different things. We anticipate over the coming months. Uh for example, talking to business owners about what they can do to be more resilient on on a very. Uh micro level, what they specifically could do. I know that Teresa has already ordered. Um some resiliency booklets that will help business owners look into this. Simple things like, do you know that your um like your contents of your store or whatever it is? Probably not covered by your insurance if it's damaged by flood. Um are you ready for that? Will you, will you get maybe the flood insurance? Um, are you ready for that? Will you, will you get maybe the flood insurance that will provide contents coverage? We'll be reaching out to the community um, uh, going forward to to look at some of these things and to make sure that we are prepared. Um, thank you very much, Teresa, and and for your whole team. And I appreciate everybody's um attention. I know this was a long, long presentation. It's a long time coming and it's just the beginning as we begin to um really prepare for this. The only thing that we're asking for um, sort of today from our community is a commitment to be prepared. That's all. Right now, it's just a commitment to be prepared. Um, and that that's going to take some work and some study. Okay, um, so moving on to the next item on our agenda. That is to discuss an act on the Memorial Day Parade. Sadly, the uh Memorial Day Parade has was kind of fallen victim to our uh our COVID um pandemic, and we haven't had a chance to do this um in in the past couple of years. And I I I'm hopeful that we are turning around and turning that corner. We could still face some variant um that that comes up and changes things. But I'd like for us to be preparing for, to hold a Memorial Day Parade um so that we can uh celebrate as a community, kind of the, hopefully, the end of this pandemic. Um, and that that's sort of been traditionally the beginning of summer. A solemn day that we honor those who've fallen for our country. But also uh, a day to celebrate um the beginning of summer. Um, so what I'm going to be asking the council is to um, to kind of direct our um, our town manager to start taking steps to to prepare for those things, prepare for the parade. And and I've also, I've reached out already to um Scott Douglas, a commander in the Navy and a resident. Um, and he's he's uh agreed to be our um master of ceremonies for the couple of ceremonies that we can, we can hold. So all I'm asking for uh from the um council tonight is is to sort of direct our town manager to begin that process. Um, and um, and take steps necessary to hold the parade, hold those ceremonies uh so that we can hopefully celebrate the end of this pandemic and and move on. Uh, anybody on the council want to be heard on this? Yes, Counsel Brier.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I I think it's a terrific idea. It'll be great to have everybody in the community come out. Um, you know, lining lining the streets on the way up to Town Hall would be a really good way to both, you know, memorialize the day, but also um celebrate as a town together um outside. You know, cheering is appropriate, um, listening is appropriate. And yeah, I I think um it would be great uh to to get it back going again.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Uh, anyone else on the council? I do see Paul Dolcinos has his hand raised. Uh, if you can bring him over and unmute. Paul, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, it is the intent that the Barrington United Veterans Council was prepared to execute Memorial Day activities as we have for the last sixty-eight years since our founding in nineteen fifty-four, excluding the two years uh of COVID uh having postponed it. I've already sent out an invitation uh on the eighth of February to all the past participants to let them know of our intent. Uh, I've already turned in an RI uh dot parade request to the clerk's office on the second week of February. And I've already requested four military units and have heard from ten participating groups that have already RSVP to participate. In addition, we're in communication with two potential keynote speakers. I appreciate uh if if Mr. Douglas is interested in supporting us, that he attend our meetings and join our organization, which he, you know, is welcome to do. Um, our intent was to to do it as we've always done, assemble at Victory Gate at eight in the morning, do a wreath laying at eight thirty, step off at nine AM. Uh, reach the Town Hall at ten forty-five and commence patriotic activities afterwards from eleven to twelve. So um, I guess I find it a little bit uh strange that uh suddenly uh that this town council is is it appears like you're trying to sidestep our uh our support and our leadership in this particular endeavor. And uh, I don't, you know, I I guess I need to know whether uh we need to cease and desist and back off. Uh, but we've already uh already taken the lead on this action like we had from all previous years. Uh, if the town council does not want us to run this event, then maybe you need to hold a vote and and strip us of this responsibility.
Well, we will be holding a vote, Paul. Thank you. Um, and I certainly don't think that we uh are asking to remove responsibility from the United Veterans Coalition or Council, I can't, whichever committee that is. Um, this would really just be run by our town manager to make sure that it's coordinated. Um, anyone else on the council um want to comment on this? If not, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd make a motion that the town council direct the town manager to begin planning and take all steps necessary to effectuate the Memorial Day festivities, including the ceremony at Victory Gate, the parade, and the ceremony following. And I don't know if I need to make two motions, but I would then also that the council would appoint Commander Scott Douglas as the master of ceremonies for all ceremonies.
I I think we could probably do that as one.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Further discussion. Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Brier?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Uh, okay. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on forgiving police detail fee fees for the uh film forward and courtyard at the Cove. Phil, do you want to take us through this?
Yes, so the uh last year was, it was uh approved through the town manager's office, the forgiving of the police detail fees that were um incurred for the Film Forward event last summer and at a magnitude four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The, and similar event in that it was open to the public free of charge on town property that brought lots of people together, well attended. It was the courtyard at the Cove. Um, I thought that was a similar event. And that had incurred about fourteen hundred and eighty-one dollars of police detail charges. The uh police chief has um indicated that the budget can absorb these costs with no, no issues. So they could be waived without any budgetary concerns, but the waiver of the fees, although supported by two town managers, um, has to go through the town council. Um, because they, there's no line item really for that. So the other part of that would be to going forward, this is kind of looking backward, but going forward, what would would the council be interested in establishing a policy for considering waiver of fees up to, say, a certain amount for types of, these types of events? Um, so you'd have to, you know, establish some parameters for um, these events to qualify for some kind of forgiveness on um pulling these these things together. So uh, that that's why I brought it forward. And this coincides with a recent um check that was delivered to the town of Barrington from Discover Newport for an amount of seventy-five hundred dollars that could be used for th- this type of thing where you're uh supporting events that aren't necessarily, they've been organized by the town, but they're um public events. And um, so so that's that's what I brought forward to the council for consideration. Two, two different things and two different motions are drafted for your consideration.
Um, and the, just so that I understand, for these two events, there wasn't a charge to use the Town Hall property or the park. There was no charge for that, right?
Right. And the town had waived the actual, it's a small fee, but there's a land use application fee of uh it's a twenty-five dollar application fee and twenty-five dollars per day of the event. So that that was a fee that wasn't charged anyway. But during COVID, we're waiving that. Um, so there were, there were no charges for use of either property.
Yeah. Okay. Um, anyone on the council? Yes, and Elise.
I have some questions, Phil. Um, so this Discover Newport check, is this a one-time pack or are we expecting that we'd receive that again in future years?
It came, it kind of came out of nowhere, right when I was writing this memo, which is kind of interesting, what's this? But uh, it it appears to be a one-time based on the letter, one-time contribution.
Okay. Um, and then how many events do we have typically in a year requesting relief of of expenses like this?
Uh, this, these are the only two events that uh I would say qualify or have come up uh last year, these last, these two events that are that I just discussed. I don't know if any, any other um, events where that where that's the similar request was made. I don't know if anybody, Michelle, Jeremiah, Maya, if you have any additional thoughts on that, but I'm not aware of any other event like that.
Um, oops. Sorry there. Um, no, I think those were the only two last year.
Okay. And things coming for, coming up, so like the um NAAT five K or the Tough Tiger or anything like that at Hampton Meadows, just because they didn't happen last year, I'm just wondering if maybe they were coming up again this year.
I'm I'm not aware that either of those races is going to have a police detail. The police chief may know the answer to that.
You think that, I I certainly think that some of the races in the past have, um, especially the the longer ones that require sort of redirecting uh traffic. Um, like the, the marathon, the roadie marathon did. Um, but I'm not sure about these. Chief?
Yes, uh, good evening. The marathon definitely has um police details involved. Um, I've already spoken to uh the promoter and a safety committee, uh, safety Zoom meeting. So yes, definitely. Um, uh, I've met with the five K um promoter or organizer. Um, and that's still to be determined. We're going to really make an effort to um, to keep details at a limit for that NAAT five K, just based on um, it it's not a big, big event like the marathon, uh, and all the proceeds are benefiting um the PTO, I believe, so.
Okay.
I'm fully in support of this. I just would want to make sure that if there are other organizations that would have similar concerns or would have similar needs, that we'd be able to um absorb those costs as well. So that was just my, those are my questions related to just how how many do we have? How many do we foresee? Um, and if the funds would be available for us year over year?
Yeah, that that's, I think that's a, that's really a fair point if um, so we, we do have that that check, but on an ongoing basis, um, we're going to have various road races. I'm sure there are other events that are going to have police details that aren't uh town sponsored. So, for example, when we have the concerts, um, when we have details, that's something that we obviously pay for. Um, but uh, for private events, um, where do we say no? Or do we have to say yes to all of them? Um, you know, so I think some of our policies are are new enough. Um, for example, I have heard uh talk about using uh some public lands uh for a high school reunion. It's a great idea. Um, so we, if if they call for police details, should we be paying for that? Um, we want to welcome them back, especially for Barrington High School graduates. Um, but I think we need to sort of figure out if we're going to do this, where is that line? And and um, how do we draw that? I don't, I don't think we should make a blanket policy uh just yet because I just because I can't think of all the ones where we might be uh on the hook for uh paying for it. Um, so I think it's tough to make a blanket policy saying that we will. Um, Mariana Silva Buck has her hand up, please.
This time I am raising my hand and there's no plates on top of my computer. So, thank you. Um, I just want to thank everybody for welcoming the the comments. And I can't thank enough, Chief, um, you were amazing last year on helping out and supporting the the courtyard of the Cove. Meredith, I don't know what I would have done without you. Actually, I do know. There would be no Cove, courtyard of the Cove, because that would not happen. So major shout out and thank you to you and the entire council. Phil, for being a big supporter and being there as well. Michelle, you're a rock star. Thank you for walking me through and and getting things done. And I know it was quick and it was, it was a very fast turnaround. Um, and to, to your point, President Carroll, um, one of the things that I had suggested before, this event, the courtyard of the Cove, is the biggest event in town. I was just crazy enough to put it together. Um, if if I knew how low water would have taken, I would have not done it. But here we are gearing up for year two. So it will happen again. Um, and all, I think that the main difference uh over where to draw the line, one suggestion could be, you know, a high school reunion. It would be considered a private event, right, where a group of people is limited to coming there by invitation or by a specific purpose, where something like the event that I put together is a community building event. So the only thing that I did was take that from the responsibility of the town or of the the recreation department to put an event like that together like you do for the concert, and I just did it myself. But the outcome and the goal of that event is the same exactly thing. It's the same exactly goal of the concert per se. I actually purposely scheduled um that event, or I did a schedule to kind of match up with the concert series, so we would have more options for the community, for the town of Barrington, of having av- availability and events in town throughout the weekend where people wouldn't have to leave town and we would welcome people from outside to come to Barrington. And that was after a little bit of an assessment from the the Economic Development Board at that point when I was a member, where we were comparing numbers of sales and business development from our neighboring towns from Warren and Bristol. And we realized we are hundreds of thousands of dollars behind. And a lot of that money came in from having events, having the their their summer series, bringing food trucks and things like that. Um, feel correct if I'm wrong, I think the the court, the 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 Police Cove Park was finalized about six years ago. And the goal for the Police Cove Park, and it is built to receive food trucks and to have the kind of events that I put together. The town just never was able to do it. Um, again, I was just crazy enough to look at it from being part of the planning board and discussing the usage of the land and want to do that in an effort to also help business to kind of take it outside, bring the community together, like how could we build a community? There was so much emotionally charged, so many discussions, so many things that went on started on the wrong foot. And all I wanted to do was to bring the community together while also supporting the business, bringing a multitude of different cultures and styles and 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 diversity into the town to really tie into what the the purpose and the new planning of the town has been, which was to bring a diversity consultant, to bring um, you know, those discussions to the table, to use the land properly. We spent millions of dollars to build that park. Let's bring it to good, let's put it to good use. And if the town cannot handle And if the town cannot handle doing it for lack of staffing, there are people like myself and the, the people who are putting the film festival together, who are willing to do that on behalf of the town per se. So I just would like for the council to consider to start looking at our events, especially mine, not as a private event, but it's a community event, it's a town event that is just being put together by a, a private person because we want to support the town, not because we are trying to benefit from it. And I, and again, I think my, my event is the one with the biggest cost and that would have been a huge burden for me as well to, to swallow that cost. I didn't realize actually when we were building it, that, that would happen. So if, if we can do, if we can do this with this, this funding, that would be incredible. And if going forward, this is something that I could continue to do for the town and have the town sponsor the police detail, I would greatly appreciate it. And I think the entire town would too.
Thank you. Um, Council Brier, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, I was gonna um, I agree with your comments that this is something where I think a, a blanket um, or a specific policy might be, uh, we might be kind of, that might be ahead of where we need to be now. But I think um, like Council Conway said, that this is absolutely something we should do. It's just sort of figuring out the best way to do it. And I wonder, and I don't know if it's, it's helpful or not, if we were to come up with sort of guidelines that aren't necessarily stripped and then leave it at the discretion of the town manager. And then if certain thresholds are, are passed, then it could come down to the um, come to the council for further review if, let's say it's over a certain dollar amount or isn't fully open to the public, but partly open to the public, something like that. Um, I know maybe we can get guidance from the solicitor on how to draft a policy that would both have the flexibility and also the right um, safeguards in place.
Uh, this is Amy. Um, yeah, you may wanna wish to consider instead of adopting something tonight along the lines of the motion and the manager's memo, you may wish to consider referring this um, back to the manager to develop a policy. And of course, our office will work with him on that. And then the council could review and approve a draft policy at the next meeting.
So um, let me, let me suggest there, the managers proposed two motions. One would, would pay for the fees on a sort of backward-looking basis. And then the other would be to sort of start uh, collecting um, criteria um, on a forward-looking basis. I, I want to be, um, I mean, I'm inclined to say first of all that um, because our, our managers uh, our last two managers sort of uh, approved this and it wasn't until later that they realized this. I, I, I'm not real wild about a bait and switch for folks. We, we kind of made a commitment. I think we should back up our, our managers on that. So I'm okay with the sort of backward-looking. And then I think Amy's right. If, if the man, if the town manager could come up with a policy, we could look at it. There are a lot of factors that I can't, you know, think of right now. I, you know, we do have someone who's talking about kind of a, almost a street fair kind of thing, which would be wonderful as well. Um, that sounds like that might apply. At a certain point, um, you know, we, we're the, uh, the side, the municipal side is the one with the smaller budget. So we do have to watch our pennies pretty closely. Um, so we'll have to sort of um, evaluate that uh, in, in light of a policy. I'm, I'm sorry, TR had his hand raised. TR?
Hello again. I'm just wondering if this blanket policy is gonna affect everyone? Seeing since after prom has some uh, police details or after prom and all that other stuff where they have to spend money on also getting a police detail. So is that gonna be incorporated into this town budget? Or seeing since it's the school side, does it interfere with town versus school, that whole aspect that we go about, you know? Um, I don't know how that policy would work for them. Or is it just gonna be for a town function? You know, uh, not to put the film festival or whatever, but if it's gonna be sponsored by Parks and Rec or a private organization, but for the town, how's that gonna work? You know, you got a whole bunch of other um, PTOs and all that other stuff that come up, that might need police details here and there. Are they gonna be able to contact with this money, that one-time fee or whatever? Or is the town just gonna sponsor a police detail?
That's the great questions. And, and on a going-forward basis, I, I don't have the answer to them. I, I have some of those concerns in terms of, you know, where, where do we stop? And it, it's gonna be the kind of thing that we should um, look at closely. I think these two events were a little bit different in, they were almost um, you know, first-time kind of events i- in the sense that um, these were the first events, I think, where we, we had passed an ordinance allowing the manager to allow for alcohol at certain events. And so these were sort of the first um, of those two, and, and they seem to have gone off well. And I, I don't know if that had something to do with the um, we hadn't had events like this at town hall. We certainly hadn't had them at um, Police Cove Park, but maybe that was the, the thinking from our managers. Um, but I just, you know, I think on a going forward, there, there's a lot to be investigated and, and looked at. But uh, looking back, it, it seems like a reasonable request.
Do you think it would be more feasible to come up with a set fee for everybody and then the town could pick up the rest?
Yeah, it's, uh, so I think that's
Something like that.
That, that might be a, you know, we might set a limit if we decide that we'll do it. And I'm just riffing kind of here, but um, you know, if, if we decide we'll do it, maybe the, and, and we find that there are uh, a dozen of these events that we think are in the category, we could set a maximum that will contribute in terms of offsetting those, those police detail fees or something like that. But uh, part of it, I think, has to do with uh, the right to exclude, right? So if, if you're using um, our facilities and you say, I'm sorry, this is only for the class of uh, eighty-five or something like that, um, then that would prob, that strikes me as you probably, and, and you need a police detail. That strikes me as, as something that's less of a public event, but a, a lot of things to think about. Counselor Castell?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I, I would first acknowledge that, that I think, I think the uh, the courtyard at the Cove event and film forward were, were much needed and, and, and beneficial to the community. And, and I think that because there was some novelty and aspects of each, that it would make sense to, to, to forgive um, on those, on those details. And I thought that um, I mean, I think a lot of people have made, made points about this. And we can also acknowledge going forward that, that there's some benefit, maybe to local businesses to having more events in town, especially in good weather and on weekends, uh, to make Barrington maybe a regional destination for things like this. Um, and I've, I, I'm aware of the individual you mentioned earlier, talking about a, a street event, a street fair, which I think is, is a great idea. That said, we have to be aware of, of, of our, our budget and, and our, and we both need a process to determine uh, the types of events that we should support in this way and go, go forward and possibly with some public subsidy or support and, and whatnot. And how you do that uh, has legal implications and implications for um, both law enforcement and in some communities, I've looked at some of these things. There are also there are requests for, for fire details as well, for firefighters, depending what you're doing. Um, and so it is a complicated thing. I think that setting a policy tonight would be, would be difficult. But I think the town manager in consultation with, with the solicitor's office, also uh, and our chiefs could, could start, start to draft something. Some of the issues that have been identified already, not necessarily nece- necessarily just by me, we have to consider whether we would have a profit or nonprofit events or, or treat each one differently, whether we be dealing with, with entry fees or not. I prefer not. It's gonna be a community event. Um, some communities, I think, may require some insurance or bonding, depending on what type of an event you, you're going to have.
And so we, I do think we already do that.
We do that.
In general, for using the property.
All right, that, yeah. And, and so there, there are models out there for communities that do a lot of street events and some, some larger than ours. Um, and sometimes there'll even be a fee for police detail that is sort of a subsidy, but also ensures that, that, that the town is not covering the whole cost. And so there's a lot, there are a lot of moving parts here. And so I, I, rather than making a decision on this tonight or setting a policy, I think there are things we have to review. I don't know if there are relevant committees that, that we'd want to refer this to as well, or if we just want to start with the manager talking to the chiefs and the solicitor and maybe go that route. But either way is fine with me. Um, and so that's sort of just where I am prior to any motion that we make.
Yeah, actually, that's, that's a good point. I mean, Parks and Rec um, would be a kind of a natural to be uh, looking at this. I don't, I don't know if they want it on their plate to have to come up with a policy, but um, that's where a lot of these events take place, right? Lathan Park, um, Police Cove Park. They might be the, the right ones. Um, is Mike Seward on the call still? Uh, no, he's not. Um, oh, but TR is. Um, TR, is this the kind of thing you think um, Parks and Rec would be interested in, in evaluating like a policy like this?
Um, I can't speak for everybody, but I wouldn't mind doing that uh, to review something coming up. Um, I know at one point we had recommended that the fees be waived, the twenty-five dollar fees for the last couple of years. But I do know that a couple of uh, individual groups did pay their twenty-five dollar field use fees for the past two years. So uh, maybe that's something you guys can look at also, or give to us to look at to maybe refund their fee fees, you know? Um, even though it's not much, but still it was the point that um, they ended up paying. But on Carl's hand, I think it would be a great idea if uh, if it gets pushed down us.
Okay, great. Um, Mariana Silva Buck?
I'd also uh, like to mention too, that one, I, one way to look at it and to be more effective in creating policy and TR, I appreciate your, your input and, and asking those questions because my understanding too, as soon as I went to apply, it was the first thing that the, 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 the town told me is that there was effective, there was an effect, the wa- the waiving of those fees. So definitely if somebody was paying for, for those fees, that was probably ill-advised and as it was knowledge for anybody walking through um, the town hall, that those fees were waived because of COVID. We had the, a, a town's manager's order on those. My suggestion should be that this should be a discussion on creating the policy that, that intersects with a few different boards. Um, the, the planning board should be one and the Economic Development Board and the recreations and Parks and Recreations, because it involves all three departments really. And this could be a collaborative effort on creating policies. And also, if, if I can, I'm happy to sort of throw some ideas and, and, and sit down with, with Phil and try to figure something out, or at least create some models and do some research on my own if that's allowed. Um, and Carl, to your point, like the, the way that I looked at creating the event and the, and the places I looked at was pretty much Providence. That's where I got my reference from. And that's how we actually changed some of the policies around bringing alcohol into public, the, the public field. A lot of that was looking back at how Providence, how the city of Providence handles it, and we were sort of trying to model it. And that's how, how the, the, the town clerk's office was working too, if I'm not mistaken. Meredith, she stood in the call. She can definitely correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, our, our main focus was the town of Providence. That's what we were looking at. Or the city of Providence, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so um, maybe we can start with um, Parks and Rec uh, to, to sort of look at drafts, um, in, in, I hate to split it up and come up with uh, four different um, policies. But Annalise, please, go ahead. Oop, muted.
I have a motion when you're ready for it.
Okay.
Um, but TR had to stand up again.
TR, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that um, we do not make a policy. We only make suggestions and you guys are the ones that make the policy. So I, I just want to clarify that with this buck. Um, we're, we're only making suggestions on how to go about doing it if it does come to us. So um, like I said, I can't speak for the whole group. I'm not the chair, uh, vice chair anymore. So that would um, be up to them to decide that. But like I said, we're only making suggestions. You make policy.
Okay. Uh, Annalise, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so I'm, I actually was hoping to start with the more complicated motion first.
Okay.
Um, which would be to direct the town manager to create a policy that establishes guidelines with input from Parks and Rec Planning Board and Economic Development Committee to forgive town costs related to privately-sponsored events held on town property.
Um, could you repeat it?
Yeah. And I think, I think I have a hanging participle or whatever. Um, to direct town manager to create a policy that establishes guidelines with input from Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Board and Eco- Economic Development Committee to forgive town costs related to privately-sponsored events held on town property.
To um, so I, I think that makes a lot of sense, except I'm not sure the town costs there.
Oh, okay, this.
Maybe we could say um, um, police and fire detail costs.
Okay. Phil, that was left over for, the town cost was left over from the motion that you proposed. I didn't know if there was a reason why there was town costs versus police and fires specifically.
Not really, no.
Okay, maybe I'm
Yeah, I don't.
So if you, Phil, if, if you were to like, come up with a block out a, a, a very um, rough draft and then submit it for comment to them, maybe they could come back together and say, what about this? What about that? And sort of help you fill it in. But if you started, rather than have three competing policies, um, we could sort of have one and then combine all the comments. I think that, that makes more sense the way Annalise described it. Um, direct the town manager to create a policy that establishes guidelines to forgive police and fire detail costs for public events. Um, why don't we just call it certain public events? And then we can sort of define what it is later. Um, uh, with input Planning Board, Parks and Rec and EDC. Mary, did you get all of that?
I did.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so Annalise has made that motion. Um, I'll second it. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Brier?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. And then there's the simpler one.
Uh, I make a motion to waive the fees charged for police details associated with film forward in twenty twenty one totaling four thirty nine. I think this is supposed to be twenty twenty two.
No, last year.
No, twenty twenty one totaling four thirty nine in Courtyard at the Cove totaling fourteen eighty one.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Um, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Um, great. Well, well, thank you. Um, next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on resolutions. There is an Arbor Day um resolution. Um, I don't know if anybody had any comments about it or concerns, suggestions. If not, um I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution proclaiming April twenty ninth, twenty twenty two as Arbor Day in the town of Barrington. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Um, next item is to discuss and act on authorizing thirty thousand dollars in additional funding to expand the scope of the town's contract with the Consulting Resiliency Planner, Kim Jacobs. Um, Phil or Teresa, do you want to take us through this?
I was going to pass it over to Teresa.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Here.
Um, yeah, so with this, we are requesting approval of thirty thousand dollars in additional funding to expand the scope of work in the town's contract with Consulting Resiliency Planner, Kim Jacobs. Um, in her role as a resiliency planning consultant for the town, which started back in September twenty nineteen, Ms. Jacobs has been instrumental in assisting the town with numerous grants, functioning as project manager for several key initiatives and serving as a liaison for the planning department on various programs. Um, and the attached memo does highlight a lot of the um many of the grants that have been leveraged because of Kim's great work um in partnership with our department. And um we are proposing that she uh serve as a um a project team member and lead the charge uh many tasks to complete our update of the town's hazard mitigation plan. And um, we received a FEMA brick grant in January twenty twenty two um to update our hazard mitigation and flood management plan. As we mentioned earlier, we're putting a steering committee together now for that and are um under a schedule to have a draft completed by June, which is three months away, and um submit that for review um within REMA and Rhode Island EMA and FEMA for adoption of that plan um by August of twenty twenty two, so we uh avoid a lapsing of our um existing hazard mitigation plan and ensure that we are continuing to um risk be eligible for um FEMA-related grants um as appropriate. So with this, we're requesting that approval of additional thirty thousand dollars up to twenty two thousand eight seventy five would come from a FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant to complete tasks associated with the update of the town's Hazard Mitigation and Flood Plan Management Plan um built based on the contracted hourly rate of sixty nine dollars an hour, and the remaining funds would are proposed to come from the town's Climate Mitigation Capital Reserve Fund, which would be used to cover tasks related to the plant update and also other tasks as assigned, as we do are seeing additional funding sources come forward for project implementation. And uh Kim's track record with the department and with the town um has really been um successful in leveraging many grant awards um to support the resiliency efforts that have been um um associated and charged to it uh for the planning, building, and resiliency department. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, hundreds of thousands of dollars in just a few short years. Um, and um, does anyone have any questions on this? Does anyone want to make this motion? Um. I will make a motion to approve thirty thousand dollars in additional funding to expand the scope of the town's contract with Consulting Resiliency Planner, Kim Jacobs of Barrington, with up to twenty two thousand eight hundred seventy five coming from a FEMA Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant and the balance from the town's Climate Mitigation Capital Reserve Fund. I've made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Um, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Great, um, the next series of items is to discuss and act on some bids, and we have a lot of them. Um. The the first one is from the Bay Team. And um Denise Salves is here. I see Denise.
I am, thank you.
Through this, please.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, my name is Denise Salves. I am the Director of the Bay Team, Barrington's Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. Um, this contract was originally awarded to Laura Cook and was put back out to bid um when she needed to end the contract. Um, we posted it, uh reviewed submissions, interviewed, and are asking the council tonight to award the contract to Emily Sweeney in the amount of thirty six thousand four hundred dollars.
Great, um, thank you. Any any question for Denise? Okay. Does anyone want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to award Emily Sweeney of North Providence contract in the amount of thirty six thousand four hundred dollars annually, based on the compensation schedule set forth by I'll just say the acronym SAM HSA and will be reviewed on an annual basis during this five-year grant. It is understood that this position is grant-funded and limited to the terms, dates, and availability of funding based on the grant.
A motion is being seconded by Counselor Breyer. Um, any further discussion? Uh, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Um, the next item is to, from the Board of Canvassers, uh, and this is for redistricting consultant services. And who will uh take us through this, Mary or Phil?
I was going to let Mary handle this. Mary?
And I would like it if you um pulled over Claire Boys. She is the chairman of the Board of Canvassers.
Thank you.
Okay, there's, yep. Hi, Claire, if you can, there you go. Um, could you take us through this?
Uh, yes, um, the Board of Canvassers um advertised for bidding for redistricting the town of Barrington uh from the twenty twen- twenty twenty census. And after, um, well, we submitted up for two bids, but we received four, and after the, after the board reviewed all four um bids, um, we decided that um to go with Election Data Services. Uh, we just felt that they had more experience and met more of our needs. They're um, they've been working in the state for quite a few years. So I would suggest, I would like the the town to approve the bid for fourteen thousand dollars for election data services.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Claire? Okay, uh, does anyone want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion to approve the bid for redistricting consultant services from Electric Data Services of Manassas, Virginia in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars to assist the Board of Canvassers with redistricting the town.
Uh, motion made by Vice President Hum, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. The next one is for a field marking robot. Um, and Alan, if you could take us through this.
Sure. Um, this was actually by a um during a financial town meeting, a petition by resident and approved by the voters um for a a uh GPS uh guided uh battery-powered uh field marking robot, which will actually help for uh marking out fields and field layout and painting the lines and and the logos and numbers on the field. So it's for forty eight thousand dollars, and we're recommending to uh authorize it to Intelligent Marking USA doing business as a turf tank.
Okay, does does anyone have any questions on this? Uh, I'm willing to support it on the condition that uh you paint the words, the letters TR on the field marking robot in some location, okay?
You can do that.
I wondered, is it, is it mainly for accuracy? Are we saving worker hours using something like this, or what's the? I I I I don't fully understand. I want to make sure before I vote for something that I fully understand the purpose.
Um, well, it it wasn't recommended by DPW, um, but it is something that has been looked at by the high school athletic director by DPW, and um it it just, it's um, it's a newer product. It's used by a lot of the universities, esp-
So
I would think on both.
Okay. Um. Rob Goncalves is on the phone, uh, is uh in there and has his hand raised. Uh, can we bring him in? Please, go ahead, sir. Mr. Goncalves, you can unmute yourself. Okay, um, come back to him. Uh, TR also has his hand raised and and can tell us a lot about this machine.
Thanks for having my name put on the field, Mike. I appreciate it. This turf tank was something that we looked at at the Boosters Club on top of everything. This will help um the guy who does the painting projects of the town. It'll help him get more established. So the robot could be painting one field at a time while he's painting another field. So it's actually taking um, basically, it'll be an employee without the benefits and all that other stuff to give him a hand. Seeing since the town is having problems hiring people right now. So that was the whole aspect that would help him alleviate so many fields that he has to paint himself. We figured it would be a good idea. That's why I brought it up at the Financial Town Meeting to get the money approved.
And this, this wouldn't do, this would just do the lines and the striping. It wouldn't do uh, it wouldn't do the the logo.
Yes, it would.
Would do the logo too?
Yes.
So will you be retired?
That would be better for me because I'm the one that does the eagle logo in the middle of the field in the beginning of the year for them. So it does take a half a day to do when you do it all by yourself. So this will help him get whatever he has to do. It'll mark the fields. Kevin does a great job. I know when they did the demo that um when it did the lines on the football field, they weren't even off by a quarter of an inch in one spot. So Kevin does a great job, but this will just be another aspect for him to um do better at his job, basically.
Carl, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, and I I want to just have a little clearer understanding of its capabilities and and purpose, and I certainly, uh, you know, the FDM, gotta respect the will of the voters too.
Um. And Mr. Goncalves, I don't know if he is, I think he's withdrawn himself, so um, okay. Um, does anyone want to make this motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll move to award the bid for a field marking robot from Intelligent Marking USA, DBA Turf Tank of Acworth, Georgia, in the amount of forty eight thousand dollars.
Motion's been made by Vice President Hum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Um, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Conway?
All I can say is what a time to be alive that we're voting on a field marking robot. Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Um, thanks, Alan, and thanks, TR. Um, next item is uh for a Ford F four fifty dump truck, and this is again our um Director of Public Works, Alan Corby.
Yeah, this is to replace one of our front-line trucks. Um, it's also used for plowing. It has its own plow root. And um, we're recommending a bid uh to um a uh Gervais Ford out of Ayr, Mass. Um, I, you may recall back in October, we went to bid and we didn't get any bidders, so we're glad at least one person bid on it, and it's it was budgeted at ninety thousand, so it's slightly over what we were budgeting, but um with inflation and everything, um it's it's still a good price, and we're getting a trade-in uh of one of our two thousand and three uh dump trucks.
Great. Great, uh, any questions? Does anyone want to make this motion?
I'll make that motion too. And I'll move to award the bid for a twenty twenty two Ford F four fifty dump truck with plow for ninety thousand nine hundred thirty eight dollars, which includes credit of four thousand seven dollars for the trade-in of a two thousand three GMC dump truck.
Uh, motion been made by Vice President Hum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway? Uh, that looked like an eye, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, and Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Thanks. The next one is uh Chief, we have a um Mach-E Mustang. Uh, can you tell us a little about that one?
Uh, yes, so the uh, it's a four-door sedan. It's intended to uh replace one of the existing SUVs, gasoline SUVs. It's a fully uh electric vehicle, uh something new to the, to the town and the state. Uh, because of its newness, it's not on the Rhode Island Master Price um agreement, so that that could have affected the pricing a little bit. Uh, we got, we received just one bid um from Taska Seacock uh fifty thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars. Um, we're excited. I think it's uh, it's certainly the future of um, police vehicles. I I think as this moves on, you're going to see electric vehicles introduced to the Master Price Agreement, which will help with pricing. Um, I think you're going to see more and more fleets um electrified, so I I think in the coming years, we'll have a a bigger variety of cars to choose from if um this works out well, and I I really anticipate it's going to work out well. We had it at the police station for a day, test drove it. Um, it's uh, it's it's pretty quick. It's certainly quick enough. Uh, it was very well received by the rank and file. Everybody got a shot to drive it. Uh, Michigan State Police did a review um for its applicability, uh, for its suitability or of police car received rave reviews, so we're really excited. Uh, we're recommending that. We are, the town approves it, and uh we introduce uh the first electric vehicle into the police fleet.
Great, thank you. And and so um uh, we can, I think it actually, we can address it. It's already on the, you you put it on the agenda, Phil. So a portion of this cost, sort of the the delta for getting an electric vehicle versus a gasoline vehicle, um, you're recommending, Phil, that it be from um ARPA funding, is that right?
That's correct.
Um. Um, so um the I'm sorry, the, the Mach-E Mustang vehicle is um Taska Ford, and what was the amount?
Fifty thousand two ninety-four.
In, in Seco, Taska in Seco, yeah.
Um, so it would be forty thousand two ninety-four plus an additional ten thousand in federal American Rescue Plan funds. Is that right, Phil?
Right.
I'm looking at the draft motion.
That's right.
Okay. Um, so I, I'm gonna make this motion because I, I think I've got it correct. And let me know if I haven't. Uh, I move that we award the bid for the Mustang, Mach-E Mustang Electric Police Vehicle to Taska in Seco in the amount of fifty thousand dollars two hundred nine, fifty thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars with funding from the Police Vehicle Capital Reserve in the amount of forty thousand two ninety-four plus ten thousand in federal American Rescue Plan funds. Did I get that correct? Okay, I, I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Humm. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye that motion carries. Um, thanks, Phil. Thanks, uh, Chief. We I, I also want to thank Magnus Thorson and the folks um on Resilience and Energy who've been pushing hard for electric police vehicles. Um, we, we're hoping for some more options as the future comes on, but that definitely, I think, is the, is the future for our fleet. Um, so thanks to everybody. Um, next I am on the agenda is uh to discuss and act on ordinances. The first one is, this is to introduce, and this was requested by our um Director of Finance. Um, this is twenty twenty-two dash four, an ordinance amendment to chapter one sixty-nine taxation, Article Two Tax Exemption for the Elderly and Totally Disabled. Um, the, the idea behind this, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, is that it's um there's a large burden on the, on the department in going through these applications uh each year. Um, my own view is that it is worth going through those. And the, and the reason, let me just kind of explain my, my thinking on it. Um, we require people, uh, the ordinance has always required um an application each year for senior tax relief. There were many years where despite the language of the ordinance, it just wasn't required. And we do hear from folks that say, I'm not getting any younger, so why can't I just um apply once I turn the right age and I won't have to worry about it. Um, well, there are two reasons. And and the main reason is that there are lots of people who've been missing out on more relief than, than they thought they could get. Uh, so when they apply, they uh, they put in what their income level is and, and are, um, we've been able to uh provide additional tax relief. There's sort of a um, you know, doesn't matter how, whatever your income is, you, as a senior, you still get a uh, a portion, but we provide additional relief if your income falls below certain thresholds. And so requiring people to do that every year helps us to find people who, who are eligible for additional relief. Um, this was sort of the, this tax relief was um Counselor Steve Boyajin's um uh real program when he came in. And and one of the things he said in talking about this is that uh tons of people miss out on the earned income tax credit every year because they just don't apply. This is a way for us to um get the relief to people who may not know that the relief is available. So that's the primary reason for requiring it. And then the secondary reason is people move to Florida uh and establish Florida as their primary residence, and then they're no longer eligible, and we should keep track of that. Um, that's not to say that we don't want to provide relief to the, to the folks in finance. But um I, I'm willing to vote to introduce this, but I just, I, I don't, I don't see myself sort of giving up the, the need to file annually for this. My recommendation would be that you can come up with a system that would just allow you to sort of spot check things, so you wouldn't have to, you could sort of audit, uh, pick a number. You could, you know, people bring in, put in their applications. You don't have to vet every single one. You could vet fifty percent of them. Um, and you know, that, that might be a way to save some of the burden. But before this comes up, again, I would just suggest that you take a look at those other options because that's um, that's my concern with, with modifying this um ordinance. Um, does anyone else have any concerns about? I, I realize it's a little unusual to talk about this at this stage because we're just introducing it. But uh, I wanted to be clear with um Phil and Kathy that um, I, I wouldn't support eliminating that annual um requirement of filing because it's helped a lot of people. Um, okay, so I will make a motion to um introduce twenty twenty-two dash four, an ordinance amendment to chapter one sixty-nine taxation, Article Two Tax Exemption for the elderly and totally disabled and set a public hearing for April four, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Humm. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. Um, next one is to introduce um uh, an ordinance to um amendment, chapter one eighty-five zoning, short-term residential rental um and twenty twenty-two dash eight um open recreation uses and accessory uses. Um, uh, does anyone have any questions about this? We're just introducing them at this time. Yes, Rob, please go ahead.
I do. So actually, I, I just wanted to provide, um, well, actually, before I provide anything, I wanted to ask maybe for some context in terms of um how this came up and what, what sort of work went into the need to um to introduce these two ordinances. And then the, the backdrop I'll give is this is something, um, several years ago, the Economic Development Commission had looked into for, I'd say probably a good six-month period of time, maybe longer, I don't know, but there was a subcommittee developed. There was um, some research, a lot of work uh that was put together. I don't remember what year it was, but at the time, the determination from the subcommittee and then adopted by the rest of the Economic Development Committee was that it, it, it wasn't really an issue in town. There was a, a couple of um maybe, it, it, I guess a couple of, of, you know, Airbnbs, for example, or other short-term type rental properties that were in town. Um, and there was maybe one known property that was kind of a pain in the neck. Um, but otherwise, it didn't seem like it was an issue and it, it, it kind of came across as a matter of overregulation for a problem that the town might not have had, but for maybe one property. Um, certainly times have changed. I, I don't remember how long ago it was, but it was several years ago. It wasn't last year or the year before, even. It was, it was many years ago. Um, so I think it's worth taking another look for sure because I, I think um short-term rentals are more prevalent. I know a lot of communities have looked into this type of an issue. Um, you know, I, I did a search right before the meeting, um, just to get an updated number. And I, I put kind of available um Airbnb units in Barrington in March, April, May, June, July, August. And I got a total of seven um popped up within that time period, understanding that that number fluctuates daily, weekly, seasonally, et cetera. So I, I mentioned all that to say um, my recommendation would be not to, to move on it next month, but to refer it back to the Economic Development Commission to take a second look or at least an updated look. Um, I mean, I, I'm open to seeing where we're at now, whether it's worth doing something or not. Um, but I, I'd hate to sidestep a committee that in the past, at least I know has looked at it and has come to one determination um over another. And um, that would be my recommendation, but my long-winded circular um explanation goes back to the other thing I said. I'm interested to see why this came up and if there's any other background or context as well.
Amy, can you, this is something your office has been working on a lot. Our Assistant Counsel is there, Amy Goins?
Yep, this is um Amy Goins. So as, as you noted, Rob, this is something that's been discussed, the idea of regulating short-term rentals. Um, with regard to the RISD property, uh, the zoning enforcement officer back in twenty twenty did issue a notice of violation to uh RISD based on their use of that property as an Airbnb. The zoning board upheld the notice of violation, but the Superior Court uh reversed that decision. The Superior Court's decision did um suggest that the town could adopt an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals um as a few other communities in Rhode Island has, have done. So that, I think, is the genesis um of this draft ordinance. And it is, I believe, under study by the Planning Board as well.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Ms. Goins. And that's actually really helpful. And I, I do recall now that you mentioned it, that Superior Court case. Um, so maybe I'll, I'll amend my recommendation, but I'm subject to what other folks think too. Um, I, I, I'd still like to refer to the Economic Development Committee if folks would agree with that. Um, but maybe not necessarily stop the progress um on the council front. And I, I guess maybe there's no harm in, in going forward with a um a potential public hearing next month, which maybe it goes forward, maybe it gets heard and, and continued, or maybe it gets heard and decided. Who knows what will happen next month, but in parallel, it sounds like the Planning Board is looking at it. If maybe the Economic Development Committee could at least take a meeting to look at it, if, if they still need the, the same timeframe that that they used. So I think it'd be the third Thursday of every month. Um, and I don't know if they're available to do it, if they have capacity on this month's agenda, but um, just a suggestion. I just figured I'd throw that out there.
Yeah, Mark, they're, they're meeting on um March seventeenth. Um, so that they would, I think. Yes, Jacob, please go ahead. Oh, muted.
I um, I shared Vice President Humm's um kind of thoughts on the background. I remember a couple of years ago, the council discussed this. And at that time, the EDC had recommended that we didn't move forward with an ordinance. And I think um the Planning Board at that time or a couple of years prior had also made a similar recommendation. And so I'd, I'd like to hear what um the committees, both of those, and also the um Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, think about this ordinance before holding the public hearing. I think the way we determine um what sort of composition of groups of people can be in a rental unit um can, can impact, whether it's two people per bedroom as a total number um that can limit different family configurations to where they can and can't rent. I just think um that it'd be good to have a, a broader input before holding the public hearing and vote on the ordinance.
Um, so the although EDC is meeting March seventeenth, uh, the Diversity Equity, they're meeting tomorrow night. So that's, they don't have time to look at it before our April meeting. Um, Amy, is there um kind of urgency to this? Or could we possibly put this to our May meeting, call for a public, introduce it now and then have a, a public hearing in May?
I, I think that's perfectly fine.
Yes, Counselor Castell.
Let me also suggest that I, I was at the Planning Board meeting when Andy from uh your office, Amy, uh laid it out for them. I think it, I mean, I, I know this is an unusual request, but if it's gonna be presented to EDC and DEI, I, I think someone from your office possibly, is it, is Andy the primary drafter uh of this? Is he the primary attorney working on it?
Um, Yes.
Yes. Then, then it might make sense to have him there to have a fuller discussion. I think we just throw this to them. There may be some misunderstanding of what, what the thinking is, so they can get a fair evaluation. I thought the Planning Board discussion was wa- was helpful, but I, I don't think it really would have been without his presence.
Uh, we'll take a look at those uh committee meeting dates and I try to have someone from our office available.
Thanks.
It'd be great if they could do a joint meeting for just, just this purpose. Um, that would, that'd be hopeful. Counselor.
Oh, I'll note it is on the DEI's agenda tomorrow, but not as asked by the council. Um, so I, I don't expect Andy would be able to attend tomorrow. Um, I don't know if there's a um memo written up about it, but that, that could also be something that would be helpful. Uh, I'm sure having him there is cer- certainly better than a memo, but if something's been written already as part of drafting the ordinance, sort of the, the rationale um might be helpful. I know that's at the beginning of the ordinance itself, but there could be um more that could be helpful.
Yeah, uh, thanks. We'll, we'll have to work on that. I know he's at the Assessment Board tomorrow night. Um, but, but if we get about a week's notice um for a meeting, we can try to have someone from the team there.
Yeah, the, at planning, there was a good, I, in the moment, the memo was certainly better than no memo. But there was a good amount of back and forth between council and the Planning Board. So I think there will be some questions. This is the type of issue where there may be that interplay.
Yeah. Um, so I, I would just suggest to um the, the folks on DEI, since they're tomorrow night, if, if we could have them do another, an extra, I know it's an extra meeting, but an extra meeting on the seventeenth, uh, if only for that issue, maybe.
I'm not sure that date will work, only because I believe that's the zoning board night as well. And, and perhaps Andy can do a doubleheader if they start earlier, but we certainly will reach out and be in touch with Phil to coordinate meeting schedules. We'll, we'll try to make it happen.
Great. Um, so our May meeting is what date? Um,
May second.
May second, okay. So I will make a motion to introduce uh twenty twenty-two dash seven, an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-five zoning article thirty-three, short-term rental and set a public hearing for May two, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Uh, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Uh, just before, do we need to um include in the order the referral to those? Uh, I guess it's already referred to the Planning Board, but to, to Economic Development and DEI? Or what, do you think that would be a separate motion?
Um, I will amend my motion uh to refer this to the um DEI Committee and to EDC.
Seconded and amended.
Okay. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Thank you. Aye.
Uh, Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
Uh, and I also vote aye that motion carries. I will also make a motion to introduce twenty twenty-two dash eight. And, and this is, this is related to um, to this as well, isn't it? The um, yeah. Uh, do we want to refer this as well, though? Because this is um, is this one um Jacob that you think should be referred as well to the um?
So I, I looked at the chart. I wasn't entirely sure what, what this ordinance is changing. Um, so I was gonna ask that. Um, it seemed that it's sort of a necessary change on top of the other ordinance. I, maybe I'm wrong about that, but um, I just, I didn't see what was changing in the amendment, just that the chart was getting updated. But I wasn't sure which update.
So this, and, and I apologize, we, we need to provide a redline copy of this ordinance, um, so the council So this, and and I apologize, we we need to provide a redline copy of this ordinance, um, so the council can see what's changing from the existing language. But the the key piece of this um that would constitute the real amendment is the note to the use table, uh, that last line accessory outdoor event use. It would be the limitation um on uh no more than uh two days in any calendar year or that has I'm sorry. So it would be the note that if an accessory outdoor event has fifty people or less or more than fifty people, but occurs no more than two days in any calendar year, that would be permitted by right in all zones. So that's really the substance of the amendment to this one.
Okay, uh, do we need to have this referred?
Uh, you know, I do think they go hand in hand, so I I think they should be referred um referred alongside each other.
Okay. Uh, any other questions about this one before we make a motion? Okay, um. I make a motion to introduce twenty twenty-two dash eight, an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-five zoning article for use regulation, section one eighty-five dash eight, see open recreation uses, section one eighty-five dash nine, accessory uses, and to set a public hearing for May two, twenty twenty-two, and to refer this for consideration to the Economic Development Committee and the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Humm. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer.
Aye.
Counsel Conway.
Aye.
Counsel Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Okay. Now we're getting into the public hearings. Um the first one is in ordinance amendment to chapter one seventy-nine vehicles and tra- traffic article two, stop intersections, one seventy-nine point three, stop intersections designated. Uh, this is at the intersection of Maple Avenue and West Street. I am opening the public hearing into this. Um, this would be installing a three-way stop uh at West Street and then in both directions on Maple Avenue. Uh, there've been some accidents reported to us and um, actually, uh, our former town planner um recommended this some years ago, uh, as I recall, but um uh, I think I think that's the case when when we were doing those other uh uh changes to Maple Avenue, but um I think this um now has been recommended also by the chief uh of police. Is that right, Mike?
Uh, yes, that's that's correct.
Okay. Um, does anyone from the public want to be heard on this this um issue? This is a public hearing. And if you want to be heard, along the bottom, you'll see the raise hand symbol. Okay. Uh, anyone on the council want to be heard on this? Okay.
President Carroll, um, would it be okay if I just allowed the couple of the petitioners to speak in case they're unable to find the raise hand button?
Sure, I thought I I was trying to to see that, because I know there were some folks who were interested.
Here we go.
Ms. Semenoff. Please go ahead.
Yes, I um I wasn't going to speak only because we had already submitted a letter um requesting the stop sign, and it didn't seem there was any opposition being spoken, and I know it's a long night, but um we really appreciate that this is being considered um as neighbors who walk through there on a regular basis. Um, it definitely feels like something that would enhance the safety and the pedestrian use that has been so successful in this area.
Great. Thank you. Okay, uh, does he, is there another one, Phil, or are you?
No, I I had an additional thought to make this go into effect on I'd say April first, but maybe April fourth. Some people don't think it's a joke uh on April, say, April fourth. So that gives us time uh for right now, we we can't really paint. We're we're not equipped to paint uh the stop bars. And um and also it would give us time to come up with a plan to alert the public that this is coming in. This is going to be installed, so um they're aware that this change is coming. And then we'll be blowing through the stop sign. Because that's how it's always been, no stop signs. So we just want a little bit of time, I think, on this one, if you just make it effective on April fourth.
So if we were to modify the motion uh at the tail end and just say to become effective on April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
That was. Sounds good.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt twenty, I'm closing the public hearing, seeing no one else from the public interested in speaking. Um, I'll make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-two dash two, an ordinance amendment to chapter one seventy-nine vehicles and traffic article two, stop intersection, section one seventy-nine point three, stop intersections designated as presented to become effective on April four, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Breyer. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Uh, e- even before I vote, I just want to comment, I I I think this is certainly something worth trying, um, and I um, I I think it's great that this is something that Phil has has brought to the table in the past and is doing so again, and certainly his opinion carries weight and um Chief Coria and the work that I think we all know he's done to um to keep our our streets safe. I know he's looked into a lot of different traffic-related issues on our streets and i- if this is something that he recommends, and I that carries a lot of weight with me, so I I wanted to pass that along. And I also, I'm I'm encouraged as we talk about making Barrington a more walkable place, I I think this is something expected, given its location um at Maple and West and with Vienna Bakery and some other um commercial establishments in that area, I think it's great to help to improve the walkability of our town with a a minimal burden on um on cars who are going through in terms of needing to stop. So with that uh being on my soapbox there, uh, I vote aye.
Okay, uh, Counsel Breyer.
Aye.
Counsel Conway.
Aye.
Counsel Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Um. The next public hearing and uh Ms. Schaefer. Uh, yes, he's still here. So Ms. Schaefer, this is uh the declaration, the renewal of our ordinance, Declaration of Emergency. Um, I am opening the public hearing in uh for uh consideration of twenty twenty-two dash six, uh renewal of our Declaration of Emergency. And Ms. Schaefer would like to be heard. Please go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the renewal of the Declaration of Emergency uh twenty twenty-two dash six. Um, first, if you could just confirm for me, I'm assuming, because since it's not, I I don't know if it's that it's, I'm just trying to understand the status, so it's not approved yet, and therefore that's why it's not a clickable link on the website. It's not viewable at this point. Um, but my assumption is it's looking at the 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 previous, that it's the same, just with the updated um dates. Is that correct?
Phil, I don't know about the clickability of it, but it's um the, yes, the only, the only changes are updated dates. And what we typically have been doing uh during the pandemic is that we will put it ahead um further than the next meeting in case we can't make our next meeting.
Okay, so.
It'll last for roughly thirty days.
Okay, understood. So assuming that it uh it's as you say, it's the same um other than the you know, going forward with the date. My, I have a few questions. One question is what is the purpose of continuing this at this point? Wha- what is this serving to continue this Declaration of Emergency? So is it because there is particular funding that is dependent upon us being in the state of emergency? Or if not, then um what is the reason? And um my other question is what is the the purpose? I- if we look at the state level, for example, the General Assembly um, you know, created the limitation of a hundred and eighty days on the governor's ability to perpetuate um the state of emergency. And so I'm wondering what what the council's view is on beginning to limit the town manager's ability to continually um declare the state of emergency. Um, and then I would just remark that, you know, continuing this is inconsistent with the mask mandates being lifted. It's inconsistent with returning to in-person meetings. Um, and quite frankly, it's just inconsistent with where we are um with COVID at this point. It's just doesn't make any sense anymore. And um I would like to, you know, be on record in opposition to renewing this state of emergency. And I would just um ask for remarks to or or um responses to my questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Schaefer. I I can respond to Tom, so um, part of this is indeed, as you suggested, um, having to do with um the availability of potential fu- future emergency funding from REMA and FEMA. Um, so that is a part of the reason. But another part of the reason is that we've seen some ups and downs in this uh pandemic. Um, we had uh at least some of us had our our masks off at a at a meeting last year, thought we were out of the woods, Delta uh variant came back in. Um, so we can't be sure that we're we're out of the woods yet. Um, we all hope that we are, um, but we're not yet. We we're hope that we're we're heading in the right direction. And this allows for the manager to make very quick um decisions if it becomes necessary. Really hope that it doesn't, but if he has to, he would be able to, for example, um, cancel a road race if it turned out that there was a spike and we had a road race scheduled. Uh, he would have the ability to say, too dangerous. Um, we've got a spike, the transmission is very high, recommending by state and local authorities that this is um that we not hold large public events, public gatherings, and therefore I am canceling this. He could do that for as a as one example. So um, those are kind of the two main reasons. One is REMA and FEMA funding, and then the other is just the ability to respond to um to upticks and risk and um variants. I don't know if I, anybody else on the council wanted to respond to that, or yes, Counsel Breyer? Uh, you're
I I wanted to respond more to the um the question about the limitations imposed by the General Assembly. Uh, where our ordinance differs is that it's actually the council that's established the state of emergency uh at the municipal level, it's not the town manager. So there isn't, um, we have a approximate thirty day. It's actually, I think, this one would go to the twelfth, so this one is a thirty-five day order, um, and and we'll reevaluate next month. And so there is that limit. It's also not quite as broad as the um the governor's Declaration of Emergency, where this Declaration of Emergency for the municipal level limits um the powers ex- excluding financial and legislative. And so it's really about licensing and permitting and ensuring the safety of town employees and people using town facilities.
Okay, so am I to understand that everybody on the council feels that um we are in a legitimate state of emergency um that requires this this facts, this fast-acting um need to to respond to spikes. Um, and then I think uh as um President Carroll was stating that um that we are somehow still mask-dependent on managing these these big spikes. So if if all of a sudden we can impose a very quickly a mask mandate across the town, that that is going to mitigate um the 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 problem of the spikes. That's how everybody feels. We need that mechanism in place to immediately respond to um a health threat.
I believe we're in a state of emergency.
Pardon me?
I do believe we're in a state of emergency.
You believe we're in a state of emergency, okay.
We've got over nine hundred thousand Americans dead, um millions around the world. Um, we are still getting people sick. Um, and so I I think we have to be careful still. Uh, I wish I wish it were otherwise, but that's that's how I see it.
Okay, are you aware of um how Rhode Island, what the Ro- I'm sorry, what the um Barrington data is for um the rates of cases and the rates of of deaths compared to other cities and towns?
Ri- Bristol County is still, according to CDC, in um not hot, I think I think we may have just dropped from high to um, we're not at moderate. I've forgotten the the level, but we're still at the level where currently CDC is recommending um masks.
Okay, you you know that Barrington is twenty-ninth out of thirty-nine um in rates of cases per one hundred thousand. And so the other twenty-eight cities and towns um that have a higher rate. Um, you know, I if, are you aware of states of emergency that those cities and towns are in? Or neighboring cities and towns?
I I'm not aware of their their states of emergency. I
Okay, and are you aware of?
I'm concerned about their states of emergency and concerned about ours. I have to be concerned about the risks faced by our um, hold on just a minute, Ms. Schaefer, it will give you a chance.
Go ahead.
I have to be concerned about the 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 risks faced by our residents. Um, and I know that uh Counsel Conway uh would like to be heard. So Counsel Conway, please.
Thank you. Um, I think the key piece here is that the town can qualify for fiscal support to recover from the pandemic. So over the last two years, the um things that have happened, whether or not we agree on how they are mitigated or what happens, there are still tremendous impacts that have have hit our community. And so to be a bit, to be able to qualify for fiscal support, it's an important it's an important piece of our protecting the town um making sure that we're we're protecting our community and we are putting ourselves in a better position to be able to recover from this. So I hear you talking about masking, I hear you talking about rates. That's not what this is about. This is truly about setting a course for the towns that we're able to um get the benefits of of what we can. And as President Carroll just said, if there is a change and we do have to make um a significant pivot because there's changing things that are going on within rates, variants, whatever it may be, we're able to respond to that. I don't think that the Declaration of Emergency inhibits anybody's ability to do anything. In fact, I think if anything, people have greater access to the town council by being able to join over a Zoom meeting. Um, I know it makes my life a lot easier as well. So um I just, I would, I would hesitate on commenting on any of the other details, because I just don't think that that's what we're looking at. We're looking at declaring a state of emergency so that we can make future changes when necessary and give um manager Harvey the ability to do those things. And we can also put the town in a better position to be able to to get financial support if needed.
Okay, I appreciate the um that, you know, in your point of view, that the clarity is around the funding. Um, that's not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance. What the ordinance um states is that um the basis for the council's emergency declaration was on the danger to health and life posed by the novel coronavirus. Um. And so I'm not seeing in the ordinance where it mentions the REMA and FEMA funding. So perhaps the the ordinance needs to be revised because it doesn't in, according to your comments, then it wouldn't be accurately reflecting what the the actual reasons are for the state of emergency. So could the ordinance be revised to be more accurate? And then my second question would be, do we have as a town the data, the medical data that and the CDC data that is being used to Mr. Carroll's point? If this is about the danger to health and life, what is the data being used? Because I know, for example, the Department of Health has not provided the medical data to the to the mask mandate lawsuit, Southwell versus McKee. They're still waiting to hear from the Department of Health on why those were needed for the kids in schools. So, for example, that medical data is not that data from RIDO is not available currently. So I'm wondering what data the council is using.
I'm I'm using CDC data. I I'm not ready to debate mask usage. That's not required by the.
Usage, I'm asking about the data being used to support. So so the CDC data, what, do you have a specific citation? Or is that available on the website, on the town website, to evaluate what data is being used to declare the state of emergency? Could I look at that?
You you can take a look at the the, so each of us is going to.
It's just CDC. So just go browse the CDC website. There's nothing specific that you're citing?
No, so each of us is going to have our own views on on why this is a state of emergency. In my view, it's it's based on information on the CDC website and in particular, the transmission rates, which still remain at at a higher level than we'd like to see them.
Okay.
I can't speak to anybody else's view.
Okay, and so we understand from Ms. Conway that she's citing the funding. President Carroll is citing CDC transmission rates. Does anybody else care to state what they're basing their vote on for? If you're if you are, in fact, voting in favor of another state of emergency, what you're basing your vote on?
A fast-moving lethal virus that has killed a million people and the way to prevent it and the need for a town manager to respond effectively and efficiently to save human life and to reduce transmission, should a spike or a variant occur, which we have already seen happen on multiple occasions? That's my answer. And I don't see, I don't see a need to prolong a debate.
Well, you don't, but maybe the public.
Medical professional who does not understand the data that's being presented by the CDC and by the medical professionals that we're listening to.
Perfect.
There's no point, there's no.
Thank you. Anybody else want to state their position?
Ms. Schaefer, don't interrupt.
And the second, the second one is, there is a fiscal responsibility that we have to the town as well. And so when Counsel Conway mentions that, it it we we do have a responsibility to the taxpayers in this town to make the right fiscal decisions for the town. And does that factor in? Of course it does. And so we have to consider that. But as far as getting into a prolonged debate, then you you should email the CDC and you should email Dr. Jean and every expert out there. This is not the form for that. We are not, we admittedly are not doctors, but we rely on the best medical evidence. And that's how we make our decisions when we make these, when we have these discussions. And I think we provide plenty of information as to what our thinking is on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brier, Mr. Humm, would you like to state what you're basing your decisions on?
Counsel Brier.
Yes, I'd say it's a combination of everything you've heard from the other three counselors. In addition, that the town manager, the the powers given to the town manager are both warranted and limited. This isn't the same executive order that you see at the state level that it allows for broad mobilization of various things. It's to take reasonable, necessary and efficient action during the virus.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I I share a lot of the same comments, I think. To cite one example, which which can go both ways, and this goes to the the flexibility and ability to move quickly is Manager Hervey was able to remove the mask mandate across town, which he wouldn't have been able to do but for this emergency declaration. We would have needed a council meeting, publicly notified, set up the right way. And it's it's a little bulkier and it doesn't move as quickly or nimbly as something like that would. And there have been times where I feel we we are improving and I'm hopeful that we're going to be in the clear. I don't know what's going to be around the next corner because we've had some sudden spikes in the past. So who knows if we'll get one? Hopefully, we don't, but if we do, we're set up so that we can address it as quickly as possible if we need to. I thought back in December or so, we were actually reaching that point until we didn't. So I think that's a a good example of why it was important to have this emergency declaration in place to be able to deal with those types of situations. So other than that, I'll I'll reserve to what the rest of the folks said as well.
Okay, Counsel Castell.
And I I would also echo, as Vice President Humm said. I think, I mean, there's reason for optimism now. We are moving in the right direction. We are having events this year that we didn't have last year. The masks, in fact, did come off in 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 schools as well. And so I think there's certainly reason for optimism. The rates are trending in the right direction. That doesn't mean we don't need flexibility to to adapt, should things go the wrong way. But with with spring coming and more ventilation, people getting outside, a lot of people being vaccinated, there is a lot of reason for optimism. That doesn't mean that this is an endless and endless cycle. But it does mean that we have to be judicious, judicious and thoughtful when we're dealing with matters of public health and also, yes, the fiscal, the fiscal reality in the town.
Well, I appreciate having you all on record. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Ms. Schaefer?
No, I just want, you know, the public to have a very clear view of each member's reasoning behind perpetuating this in two years, almost to the day after this was originally declared. So I think, you know, it's valuable to have your statements. Thank you.
Thank you. There is somebody named MV, and I don't know who that is. But MV, if you could unmute yourself and state your your Barrington resident, state your name and residence, please.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
My name is Maria Vasiliva. I'm at eleven Anthony Road. And President Carroll, I just wanted to ask you. So your position is that we are in a danger zone according to the CDC. Is that correct?
Yes.
Wow. I actually just checked the latest map on the official website of CDC, cdc.gov. And for that map, there is three levels of danger, high, medium and low. And Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut, New Jersey, and everything in the vicinity is actually in the low as of right now.
That's not correct. There are actually four.
Can you, can you please open the chat and I will send you the link?
Yeah, now there are four levels. And those levels are.
Could you please open chat and I will send you the link?
They just changed it from moderate to.
Low. It is currently in the low. And they changed it on March third. This map was updated on March third, sir.
Yeah, I I don't think that's right. I'll have to take another look at that.
Well, this is cdc.gov. It doesn't get more official than that, does it, Mr. Carroll?
Thank you. Anything else?
Have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Does anyone from the council want to be heard? Does anyone want to make a motion? I will move that we adopt twenty twenty-two dash six renewal of declaration of emergency as presented. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Counsel Castell. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Brier?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on recreational cannabis legislation. And Amy, if you can tell us just a little about this. Basically, we've, we're, we're looking at a change in the law and we need to make some decisions one way or the other. And if we don't make any decisions, that's making a decision. So eventually we're going to decide this.
Amy Gouins, Assistant Town Solicitor. The companion bills were introduced last week in the General Assembly. Of course, they still need to be approved by the Assembly and signed by the governor. But the indications point to these bills on being a go for this year. And if the legislation is approved in its current form, retail sales of recreational marijuana would be permitted in all municipalities in Rhode Island unless the municipality holds a referendum election on or before this November and the electorate rejects that use. So at this point, we're recommending that it should be referred to the Planning Board. Because I I think there are, there are a couple of decision points by the council, by the voters. But in the event the council decides not to put that question before the voters or in the event the voters reject the prohibition question, meaning the use would be allowed, it would be prudent for the town to adopt some zoning regulations addressing the retail use of recreational dispensaries. Because several years ago, the zoning ordinance was amended to address certain uses related to medical marijuana. But our zoning ordinance does not address recreational marijuana. So at this point, with it being in March, of course, you know, we would need to make preparations for the election, probably sooner rather than later. So I think we're we're recommending that it be referred to the Planning Board for some study.
Okay. Any thoughts or questions? Vice President Humm?
If I can give another plug, maybe to my old stomping grounds at the Economic Development Committee. I'm wondering if they might want to take a look as well, since we're talking about introducing, regardless of what type it is, a retail business into town. I'd be interested to see what they have to say from their perspective.
I think that makes sense, too. Counsel Brier?
I I share that I was going to make the the same comment that I think the EDC's input is also valuable.
Counsel Castell?
Yes, as liaison to EDC, both of them have it right. I I agree a hundred percent. And again, you have to move cautiously and really thoughtfully on an issue like this. And so I I think the additional, I'm trying to think if there are any other boards and commissions, but definitely planning and EDC. And I I think we'd want some, we may want some input as well. I I assume we're going to get some input from from Chief Correa on this as well.
Yeah, I I agree. So one of the things that years ago, we we when I was on the the board, I'm not sure if Counsel Brier was on at that point. We we sort of zoned out recreational, not recreational dispensaries from town for medical marijuana. And and part of that was based on the input from the chief at the time. And and I, you know, my view on this has always been that this is a new area. I I'd rather just copy and paste what what other states have learned. So, for example, one of the things that Massachusetts has learned is, especially early, there are big lines, lots of, lots of cars and things like that. So we need to think about, if we're going to allow it, we need to think about where we want to allow it. Not every place is suited for, you know, long lines of cars. And we have a lot of districts in town that could be used, that are mixed-use districts and and things like that. So we need to start to think about what what areas might be appropriate if we had big crowds, you know, at least initially, as people are, you know, kind of getting used to the idea. Maybe we won't, but that was the experience that Massachusetts had initially, like crazy traffic. It could be very different because, you know, Massachusetts is stone throw away from us and, you know, so that that newness is gone. But I think it's something we ought to consider. And I think the chief's input on pieces like that would be would be very valuable, too. So I I agree that we should refer to planning, to EDC, and also input from the administration, particularly Chief Correa. Do we need to make a motion for that or can we just?
Yes, a motion should be made to refer the matter for study.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion that we refer this matter regarding legalization of marijuana and the town's response to it, to the Economic Development Committee and to the Planning Board and also to Chief Correa. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded by Counsel Castell. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Brier?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. So next item on our agenda is to set the agenda for April four, twenty twenty-two. I'm going to put in the chat because I actually did find those, the page that I was looking for. Our our level is still shown as high by the CDC. So I want to put in the chat that that site. It shows us as high, it's not working. It shows us as high, substantial, moderate, low are the other, are the other ones. Let me just see if I can do that. There we go. Okay, so the next item is to set our agenda for Monday, April four. Obviously, we've introduced one, one that would be heard as a public hearing. That is the tax exemptions. The other two that that we introduced relating to short-term rentals and open recreation won't be heard until May. What else do we have for next month's agenda? Counsel Brier?
So I, two, two items that are related. One is, I guess, time pending because it might be discussion-heavy, but it's to discuss the the report we received from Emily Morash on our goal-setting workshop. And related to that, an idea that kind of came from something Counsel Conway had said about, forget the term to use, but it related to kind of setting, not not priorities, but sort of guide guidelines or guidance on making some decisions. And an idea was to create, what I'm thinking of is a green memo on bids. And I discussed this with Manager Hervey. So basically, the idea would be that when we receive a bid from a department head to purchase something, that on it would be sort of a rationale for, is there a more environmentally friendly option? If so, what's the cost difference? Is it worth it to do that? Is it worth it to do that or not? And so I've I've been working on something, sharing it with a few folks who are more environmentally minded than myself and just about have it ready for the solicitor and manager to look at. So if there's room on the agenda for it, I'd like to to try to get it discussed next month.
You know, I if you wouldn't mind, I think it would make sense to have resilience and energy, look at that, too. So if you wouldn't mind giving that to them once you've gotten it done.
Yeah.
I'd love to get their input, too, because they are thinking along these lines all the time.
Yeah, I was, so one of the members of the committee is one of the people I've been speaking with. My thought was introduce it, discuss it amongst the council. If everybody hated the idea, we don't have to have a committee look at it. People liked it, I expected that we'd refer it out. But I'm certainly happy to send it to them in advance, too.
Okay. Well, whenever it's done, we we can put it on the agenda for each month, even for just the status. Anything else? Anybody else? Again, as always, anytime you come up with something, please let me know and we'll we'll put it on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is to move out of open session into closed executive session. Do I hear a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two, forty-six five, eight, two, collective bargaining, United Steelworkers, DPW, AFL-CIO, Local one, four, eight, four, five, and to discuss the placement of executive session minutes from the February seventh, twenty twenty-two for placement on the town council agenda on April four, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Seconded by Vice President Humm, seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, we are moving into executive session. Everyone's welcome to stay. And but we will be moving into executive session. We'll hold open this meeting until we close the executive session, come back. But that will, I don't know how long that will be. Okay. Thank you, folks. Okay, so we have moved out of executive session. I am announcing that there was a vote made and that there's no reason not to reveal that vote, which was to endorse a memorandum of understanding with our DPW union workers, United Steelworkers. And I will now make a motion to seal the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded by Vice President Humm. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that that motion carries. And now a motion to adjourn. Does anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye, night, everybody.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for a long night. I appreciate it. Good night.
Good night, everybody.